School board meeting to order tonight. Welcome to the Aquilina How Center. This is the Leon County School Board meeting and today is Tuesday, April 24th. And we are very, very glad you're all with us tonight. So you know if you're standing in the back, there is overflow seating. Those of you that can't get a seat right now, there is seating if you'll go around the corner and there's a live feed going on around the corner. Just to make mention, we're glad everyone's with us tonight. We are missing Ms. Rasmussen who's running a bit behind and hopes to join us shortly. So we will move on to 1.1, Pledge of Allegiance. And I should have clarified someone's name before I even tried. So would you please come to the microphone and introduce yourself? Our student from Hawks Rise, pardon me?
Corinne's ready.
Oh, Corinne, I'm sorry. Good, thank goodness you're here. Okay, go for it.
Okay. So saying the pledge of allegiance today, we have Eniola Kumolafe. Yes? She goes to Hawks Rise Elementary School and she's in the fifth grade. She's accompanied by her mother, Genevieve Kumolafe, and her grandmother. And her school activities, she's on the green team, she's on the news crew, on her chorus, and she does taekwondo. She's on the A-B and A honor roll and she got second place in her school spelling bee. Her interests include reading, running, writing, and singing. Yeah, ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. And next we will have Ashley Ferris, also from Hawks Rise Elementary in the fifth grade, giving the thought of the day. She's accompanied by her mom, Allison Ferris. And her school activities include, she's also a member of the green team, she serves on safety patrol, and is also a part of the Hawks Rise News Crew. Her honors include runner-up in the Hawks Rise Tropicana Public Speaking Contest and she's on the A-B honor roll. And her interests include acting, singing, dancing, and cooking. Ashley.
The thought of the day is, don't let the fear of striking out keep you from playing the game.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, very much. And Eniola, did I say it correctly? That is a beautiful name, a beautiful name. It is just lovely. So thank you all for being with us here tonight. If I could ask the parents of both of these students and administrators from Hawks Rise to stand up and be recognized, we would greatly appreciate that in honor of your beautiful students.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Sir.
I've had the opportunity to go for my second year in a row now to Immigration Day at Hawks Rise Elementary School with Principal Friend. And I guess the fifth grade class participated in that day and it's honestly probably one of the greatest events we put on in our school system as kids get to do some research about their heritage and their history. And then they cook a little meal and they have, like they're going through Ellis Island and go through all of the physical activities and recite the preamble of the Constitution. I mean, it is really, really cool. So I was deeply moved by that event. It's like, we all come from someplace else, right? As Bill Murray said in Stripes, we're all just a bunch of mutts from someplace not here, for the most part. But it's certainly a great exercise in our history and gives kids each chance to do a little research about their ancestry and where they came from and to provide insight to other students as we learn to continue to build on acceptance of others and a greater understanding of the diversity we have in all of our schools.
Great event. Thank you so much for being here. If you students would like to leave, I know that you have homework to do, feel free to leave at any time. Don't feel like you have to stay for the whole meeting. Or you can, sometimes it's really exciting.
So now's your chance.
And it could be tonight, yeah.
It's for the hills.
All right. 2.01, Changes and Additions, Ms. Maggie Lewis Butler.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. The superintendent recommends approval of changes and additions to the April 24, 2018 School Board meeting agenda as presented. Number one, item 7.02, Reassignment Committee, provided documentation for April 2018. Number two, add item 18.10, Appalachia Elementary School Planner, Learning Area Outdoor Classroom, school-initiated project. Three, item 11.03, 2017 through 2018, Title I, Part A, Improving the Academic Achievement of the Disadvantage Amendment One, pull. Number four, item 19.01, Public Hearing Adoption. The superintendent recommends, following a public hearing, approval of amendments to Policy 5610.05, Participation in Extracurricular Activities, effective April 24, 2018, pull. Five, add item 19.06, Tallahassee Leon County Planning Commission Representative for 2018 through 2020. Six, item 7.03, Approval of Personnel Actions, add documentation and replace the information in the public content section.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis Butler. Do I have a motion to approve the changes and additions?
Madam Chair, I move the approval of the changes and additions.
Moved by Bowen, second by Wood, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Superintendent Spotlight, Superintendent.
Yes, Madam Chair. Tonight we have, we're honored to have two. First, I'd like to invite up Ms. Callie Donaldson. You know, Callie's here. And also, we have some individuals with the Health Department, Amy and Holly, if you would come up with Callie. So I met Callie shortly after I took office. I was going around doing a tour of all of our schools and went to visit Chair's Elementary School last spring. And during part of my visit, she just kind of pulled me into the clinic and said, "Oh, you need to come shadow me for a day and see what life's like in an elementary school clinic." And so I turned to Chris and we got, we were driving back from Chair's and I said, "Man, that'd be pretty cool. Why don't we start a superintendent work day program where I can walk in the shoes of our employees outside of the classroom?" I've been a classroom teacher for well over a decade and know what it's like to be a dean and a principal. But I really don't understand what life is like in a school clinic or as a bus aide or as a custodian or as a maintenance worker. So we started that program this year and this last week I went to visit Chair's and witnessed some of the amazing things that Callie does every single day. I mean, it started with a little girl that got hit and had a bloody lip. Then we had a young man with a headache and we had to call his grandmother to give, to issue, give him some children's Tylenol. And then we had a kid with a level-one diabetic that came in and helped him check his blood sugar levels and, and then we had a kid that came in that, yeah, well, then we had a kid that came in that evidently had soiled his pants the night before and slept in it. And she took him into the restroom, we wiped the young man down, gave him a clean change of clothes and sent him back to class. But it's just amazing the work that Callie and so many others like you do for the children and to support our teachers and I just can't thank you and we never could pay her enough. I'm almost embarrassed to say how we do compensate her. But we, I wanted to invite her here to give her an opportunity to say a few words. She's going to finish a graduate program at Florida A&amp;M this Friday, next Friday. So congratulations. But Callie, having spent just a little bit of time in your office and living in your world, you are truly doing the Lord's work for our children and we are forever, ever grateful. So thank you for joining us tonight. So now it's your turn.
Okay. It was a pleasure. And to make sure no one thinks that we violated HIPAA either, furper, I didn't go in the bathroom.[596.04][596.04](laughter) I gave him the wife and told him, instructed him through the door. But it was a pleasure for Rocky Hannah to actually come to the school and actually to listen to the citizens of the community. And it was a pleasure to get to speak with him because I am from Tallahassee, Florida. I've been back now for four years. I went to Caroline Brevard, I went to Bellevue Middle School, and I graduated from Rutgers. So, like he says, it's a journey, this is a god journey for me to be back here and to actually get in the healthcare field. I have an MBA already, so I'm coming from the finance row. And when that economy hit, it brought me home with my father passing, so I came back home. As Mama said, "Come back home and regroup." So I actually got into the healthcare field when I was mentoring three students at Florida A&amp;M in their social work program. They gave me such a high review on my mentoring that they actually paid a year for me to go to school.
Wow.
So I said, "You know what? This is a sign, so let me get back in school." I've been trying to get in the healthcare field, but they always want to put me on the finance side because of my MBA. I'm like, "I don't want to be in numbers anymore." So while I was doing that, I actually went, I'm certified by the state of Florida, I have my Certified Community Care Health Worker, so I have a CCHW as well. So actually being part of the school health and the school health aid, it actually is, it was not a job to me. It's actually, these kids are more like mine. There's over 500 kids at Chair's Elementary School. The parents, we're a community there, they're there for me as well as the staff here. You see the majority of them there by their chairs. So it's like to see what goes on in the community and know that you have a superintendent that cares and has concerns as well as the school board, it's an honor. And to actually get to intern under the leadership of Amy Rigg, and she's Nurse for Community Health for Department of Health in Southwood. So I'm interning with her and I'm actually learning the policy side of it. So now since I know the policy side along with actually doing the labor side, I can know I can make some changes, help make some changes.
Wonderful.
But it is a pleasure.
Thank you, Callie.
Amy or Holly, do y'all want to say if you were just about our program and our partnership that we have with you or?
Oh, sure. So I'm Amy Rigg, and I'm the School Health Services Program Administrator with the Florida Department of Health. And we oversee the 67 school health programs throughout the state of Florida. And we have been privileged to work with Callie this year. And I was so excited to see that Superintendent Hannah was going to stop in and view the clinic and see what really goes on. Because most people, unless you have a child with a chronic health condition, you don't know that there's a clinic in the school, you don't know who's staffing. A lot of people think it's Band-Aids and cough drops, and it's not. We've got kids that are, some of the examples that Superintendent Hannah mentioned, kids with type 1 diabetes, they're coming with feeding tubes, oxygen, tracheostomies, and wheelchairs, and they just need a lot of skilled nursing care. And these people go above and beyond every single day to make sure that the students have the accommodations that they need to succeed, not only in school, but once they get out into the community so they can be a productive member of society. So we are really privileged to partner with FAMU and also FSU with our Masters of Public Health Administration students. And it was just a good match with Callie and I since we both are fans of school health. Once you're in school health, you kind of never leave, it's just, it kind of gets in your system. So we're really honored to have worked with her and just will continue to promote Leon County School Health Program as well as all the 66 other programs throughout the state.
I know we have many, many, many teachers here in the room with us tonight, and I know that they are silently just grateful for what you do. I myself, many of us on the board were in the classroom and to know that if there's an issue and we can go on teaching because we know that something are being taken care of down the hallway. So I know I speak probably on behalf of every teacher here. Thank you, thank you for what you do for our kids and for taking care of them, really, honestly taking care of them. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you ladies.
Thank you.
And one final, one final spotlight this evening, Madam Chair. As you know, we were making a leadership change at Pineview Elementary School and I met with that faculty about a month and a half ago and promised them we would be, I would be meeting with the leadership team and talking about potential candidates and looking at, we have some, we have a list of really strong leaders, younger leaders that are looking and waiting and chomping at the bit for their chance to move up and take the next step. And we found two of them. And so tonight I am very proud to introduce the new principal at Pineview Elementary School, Ms. Carmen Connor. Carmen's a national board certified teacher, former Glen Howell Distinguished Educator of the Year, 20, over 20 years as a distinguished educator, has worked with Kim, drawing a blank, McFarland at Roberts Elementary School now. Is Kim here?
She's over there.
Kim, I'm looking at Michelle Prescott, I'm thinking, I've got all these names flipped, but has worked with Kim McFarland and I know Kim's broken-hearted loser, but at the same time, very excited for this opportunity for Carmen. And joining her will be Arande McCann. Arande? So Arande was an educator and teacher at Oak Ridge Elementary School and for the last several years has been a resource teacher, counselor, dean, you name it, according to David Souls, and he's been doing it at Gilchrist. And every person on my leadership team just was jumping up and in with joy to announce this partnership. And we are so excited for the wonderful things the two of you are going to do as a team at Pineview Elementary School. And the faculty is ready, they're waiting, they're all excited for your arrival. We want to go ahead and bring them to you today and they'll be officially taking over on Monday, May the 7th. So Carmen and Arande, we just wish you nothing, nothing but the best. And it's a very proud moment for the two of you and proud for me to make this announcement. So thank you so much. Now, so stand up now and we'll be off.
Big congratulations. Leon County Schools is so lucky to have both of you. Pineview is lucky to have you. We're all lucky to have you. This is an exciting, exciting night, yes, Ms. Butler.
Yes, it is exciting. Would they like to say hello? I'm just asking.
Would they, would they?
Come on, all right. Come on, Arande.
I expect that they would. Let's hear what their voices sound like.
I like it.
I'm glad to have you at Pineview. Are you, um?
Yes, ma'am.
Her mother's here. Callie's mother's here.
Good evening, everyone. And I am overjoyed. I have been excited for a couple of days now and I've smiled so much, my face hurts. But this is a wonderful opportunity and I am forever grateful and we will do you proud. We promise that. And I'm already excited about this partnership. We've known each other in passing for a long time, but I am so honored to be able to work with you.
I knew you had something to say. Uh huh.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. So thank you all again.
Thank you.
And then Callie, introduce your mom.
Okay. Can I introduce my whole family while I'm here? Yes. My mother is here, Ann Walker. My husband, Spencer Connor, and my two girls, Alexis and Malone Connor.
All right.
So, thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity and I can assure all of you that I'm going to do my best, going to put forth my effort. Like she stated before, we've been knowing each other in passing, but to actually work with her, I'm excited about that. I know she's a hard worker and I'm going to make you proud, promise you that. And my family's here as well.
All right.
My wife, LaShay, she's a reading coach at Oak Ridge Elementary.
All right.
And she's in third grade at Gilchrist Elementary.
Welcome, 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 changes. Very exciting. 4.01, Recognitions. I believe we have the 33rd Annual Florida Education Fund Black History Brain Bowl State Champions, Lincoln High School Trojans, my alma mater.
She had to get that in there, didn't she?
Yeah, it did.
So Dr. Birch.
Proud to see in that red coat all the time, Ron. Go green.
So, Dr. Birch and Dr. James, if you'd like to come up and kind of tee this thing off and bring up the members of the state championship Brain Bowl team, we'd be honored.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I've stood here so many times. Yes. Bringing the winner back home. And I feel so good.
That's true.
I've been doing this thing about 25 years.
That's right.
Okay, we're going to celebrate next year. We are so excited to present this wonderful team, you know, to be there and watch them at that state Brain Bowl competition was really awesome. They pushed and they worked hard. They had some strong, strong competition. They knew how to ask the right questions at the right time, the team members. And, you know, one of my things is you have to know your rules. They knew the rules, their coach knew the rules too. He asked questions too. That helped push them to win this competition and we're so very, very proud of them. They each have the opportunity for scholarships in the state of Florida. All five of them, isn't that awesome?
That's really.
That's really, really awesome. And that means money that their parents don't have to pay and we're so very proud of them. Mr. Birch.
Good evening, Board and Madam Chair and Superintendent. Thank you for having us here just to, it's an honor to be here in front of you. I will say, so not only do we have wonderful students at Lincoln and we're going to bring our ladies up in a second, the champion ladies up in a second, but this win set us apart because now Leon County and Lincoln High School has the most championships of any school in the state. Woo! We do have bragging rights and it's a lot of hard work. These ladies are, this is an awesome group. And it starts with our sponsors, they just do phenomenal, phenomenal work with our kids. So I'm going to bring them up right now. So guys, come up. Mr. Richmond and Mr. Zatorson, they're going to introduce our ladies.
Kind of dating myself, so I coached Mr. Zatoris at Lincoln back in the mid-'90s. I'm like, "God, I've gotten old." Yeah, so quite, quite an honor. Welcome home.
Well, thanks, guys. And thank you for, you know, acknowledging academics. And it is, you know, quite often we have, you know, wonderful student athletes, but, you know, in the classroom, these five girls are really doing well, you know, really good jobs. So I kind of wanted to introduce them and if you wanted to, you know, talk to, about how the Brain Bowl, you know, kind of works and, you know, maybe where they're going and, you know, where in the state of Florida that they're accepting scholarships. So we have, our captain is Ayanti Fisher. We have Destiny Donald as our co-captain. We have Destiny Wilson. Mia Scott. And Simone Gammons.
So I have a question. Do you guys study this all year long, all round the clock, 300, really? Do you do any, anybody involved in another activity, another sport? Yes, what do you do?
Black football.
Black football, nice. Okay, anybody else? So you guys study really hard for this, you work for it. Well, obviously your hard work has paid off, so we're very, very proud of you, very proud.
Right, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight, we appreciate it. Congratulations.
They were going to tell us, Madam Chair, that they have accepted scholarships somewhere. I think that was the plan.
I'm going to UCF, full four years paid.
I am going to Florida Golf Course University, full four years paid.
My choices were UCF and Stetson, four full years paid.
I'm going to New College of Florida, four years and board paid.
All right.
I'm going to Florida State University, the $2,000 scholarship.
I know.
Yes, what a blessing.
That is a blessing, that is a blessing.
I heard the other day, drive, someone mentioned the other day that our public school system was in a death spiral. And I think that the ESPN commentator is like, "Come on, man. Come on, man, really? A death spiral, are you kidding me? Ladies, you should be very proud of yourself. We are all so proud of how you represented, not only Lincoln High School, but all of Leon County. You should, you should be very proud of your parents here, you have family members here, or no?"
I think I see a sister waving over here. We got a sister. Oh, here's some more. There's some.
We also have wonderful former employees who continue to work with us after they retire and one, Ms. Jackson, Dr. Jackson James, who gives of herself untiringly. And there are many programs still that we attend that she started here at Leon County Schools. And so let this be a hint, hint to those who are about to retire, there still is a place for you at Leon County School. So thank you, Dr. Birch, and thank all of you for doing what you do. You make us look really good.
We also, yeah, we have certificates for all of the ladies and for the coaches. You want to, Chris, can we do a picture?
Yep.
All right.
Picture time.
I call you little woman, I call her little woman.
saying the relationship with the Tallahassee Area Coalition, Center of Excellence is amazing for these kids. So, Dr. James, I know we started touching on that, but her work here with the Coalition is awesome and it provides opportunities for our kids. So I appreciate it, them as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Trojans.
She's hard to say no to.
If I might, just take one more brief minute to recognize a group who's with us tonight. We have, I don't know if they're in this room, they might be in the overflow, but we have a group of Boy Scouts with us tonight. Troop, I want to say 17 or 117, forgive me, guys. But if we could just give them a little shout out, maybe we could all wave to them from the board. There we go, to the Boy Scouts. They're all here tonight as part of their community service badge and they attend a county, city, or school board meeting and they chose school board, so we're very honored tonight. All right, thank you. So we will move on to reports to be heard. 5.01, District Advisory Council, Ms. Dewanna Moore, Chair.
Good evening. Good evening. Chair Striplin and Vice Chair Butler, members of the Leon County School Board and Superintendent Hannah. I want to give the report of the very powerful and moving April 5th District Advisory Council meeting. All of our meetings are very good, but this meeting was one of the best meetings by far. We started with our normal introductions and we approved the agenda in the minutes and then we just went right into it. The Student District Advisory Council member, Alana Do, came to us and presented us a Student Sustainability Council idea. And as I said that night on April 5th, if you've never had the chance to hear one of these wonderful students speak, our future is well intact. So often we hear, I think it's Landon, who I get the chance to go before. Yes. Speak and how wonderful he is. And Alana Do, who presented this Student Sustainability Council idea, really, really was well polished and sounded so good about the idea. We also, this is where it really got good, we talked with Wayne Teddy. He talked about the Tallahassee's projected projects. He stated to us that in the city right now that there are over 125 active major projects going on. And at one time, they had 98 different projects in the city limits taking place at one time. And he began to show us slides about the growth that is taking place inside the city, outside the city limits, and it was mind-blowing, so many questions and, but it was wonderful to see. We talked about legislative updates with Ms. Jessica Jenna Seawitz, who's a governmental consultant. And she talked about what was going on with the legislative updates. We had to table a few things until our meeting on May 10th, but we did present a sample ballot that we will vote on for the 2018-2019 District Advisory Council leadership. And our next meeting, as I said, is May 10th. We look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you to Dr. Gill and our Superintendent for being there and thank you for all of your support.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Student District Advisory Council, Mr. Landon Coles. Oh, there he is.
One moment. Good evening.
Evening.
It is good to stand before all of you again. So to begin this report, this evening, I'd like to first start off by saying that what we've been doing is, it's kind of started with me. I've taken responsibility as chairman and I've started to do some groundwork in terms of laying the foundation for next year in order to ensure that the SDAC is even more productive and even more successful than the groundwork that we have started with this year. That has started with in terms of securing the information of all student government advisors across Leon County, from every high school and from every middle school in order to ensure that we have a successful communication loop. I feel that there are certain intermediary steps that we must take in order to get SDAC where we want to see it functioning at full capacity and ensuring that we are breaking down those communication barriers. And so I've worked with my student government advisor, Mr. Stewart, in order to secure the advisors' contact information from across the county. And basically I'm going to create one big email so that we're able to communicate back and forth constantly and that's going to be something that can serve as a tool for the following individuals who are to succeed me in the months to come. Also too, high schools and middle schools from across the county are holding student government elections to elect their next year's officers. Today Leon High School just concluded their officer election in which we elected our new student body president as well as our new senior class president. And I sat down with them and I'm going to be coordinating with them for them to step up and take a leadership role within the SDAC and to begin to reach out to other prospective student body presidents and other leaders at other respective schools here within Leon County. So that's step one and that's step two. Also, we had a discussion at our most previous SDAC meeting in which Superintendent Hannah was present and we discussed having a longest table event. At this particular point in time, I do not see it to be feasible for us to try and plan such a grandiose event with such little time left within our school year. However, what I am trying to set a goal for is when the new SDAC chairman and student school board representative are appointed and they are on the board and they are working, I would like to go ahead and set a tentative date with them in August so that way we can go ahead and hold a longest table event for all incoming juniors as well as new seniors who have just become seniors at the time. And so that's kind of the goal that we want to set, starting a new tradition here in Leon County and taking advantage of the close-knit community that we do have. I believe that the longest table event, that many, myself and Karina were both present, I believe that it was a very successful event in which we were able to talk about the issues and the challenges that we face here within our Leon community and involve students not only within student government, but again, from across the county, that type of diversity that we want to see. And that segues me into my very next point that I wanted to bring up in terms of, me and my student government, we have been having conversations most recently about how to break down those barriers in which we see students kind of self-segregating themselves based on groups that tend to look like them or act like them and different initiatives that we can kind of enact across the county in order to see that students are really banding together and that we're including those who are not only, like I said, outside of student government, so we can gain those new perspectives that we need to really face the new challenges that we do have. So we began to have that conversation. I'm a firm believer that communication first and foremost is the key to any type of successful situation with the SDAC, with us being students and us bringing these, like I said, trying to find common solutions and work from common ground. So that is something that I've also been trying to spearhead within my school and I hope to be able to bring that to the other schools with the time that I do have left. And with that being said, we have also began to, at our most previous SDAC meeting, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Michelle Gale has set a schedule in terms of us getting a new student school board member appointed as well as another SDAC chairman. And also too, we are looking to expand the positions that we have for student involvement. We are very fortunate and very blessed here in Leon County to be able to have a voice as students with all of you, those who are leading us, and we are expanding those positions, I believe, to the DAC board, if that's one of the positions that you also mentioned, and as well as the Leon County Schools Foundation Board as well. So we are doubling the positions, doubling the students' ability to be able to raise their voice and stand up and speak out and, like I said, have a voice and a place with the decision-making that goes on here on these prospective boards. So that excites me a lot. I like the progress. I like the way we're heading and I want to do my part again on this intermediary step in order to ensure that next year is even more efficient. And with that, that leads me to my next point that I want to bring up. I am spearheading an initiative at my school, creating a list of scholarships. A lot of times, we have a lot of unfortunate kids here within Leon County and the thing about it is, is that goes back to what I said, that key, communication. If we're not communicating, if we're not passing along the knowledge that we have, what are we really doing? So what I've been doing is, as a senior going through this process, I know how I felt when I first began my senior year. I was nervous, I was scared, I didn't necessarily know what I was doing, but I figured it out. And as I have went along, I have compiled a broad list of scholarships, whether it applies to you being a minority or a woman or regardless of who you are, so students can really step forward and apply for these scholarships and so that way we can have representation from right here within our county for a lot of this money that goes unawarded because students don't know or don't apply to it. So that's another initiative I'm trying to start and trying to spread it to all the schools and that goes hand in hand with me having the communication between all the advisors of student governments across each high school. So that way when I finish compiling this list, I'm able to spread it to them and they're able to disseminate, disseminate that information to their students. So it's just a network of communication that I'm trying to build in order to ensure that again, we're building a solid foundation for next year. And finally, my final point is, I have been sitting down with not only advisors, but new officers and students from across multiple schools, including Rickards and Godby as well as Lincoln, and we've been sitting down trying to, I've been trying to get some polls as to what the vision for SDAC is. My goal as chairman for this year, when I first set out, was that the SDAC needs to be a fluid organization, open to change, and open to any students' suggestions about how we should move through our proceedings. With the SDAC being such a young board and such a young initiative and with very few counties here within our state doing this process, it's up to us to set the precedent for the years to come. And that's why, again, I've been going back, trying to reach out to as many students as I possibly can to see about the bylaws and the processes and how we go about voting things and to, you know, get a feel for how students feel we should be conducting our proceedings. And that's what I've been up to as the chairman and again, it is an honor to stand before all of you. And I know that my last time will actually be the day of my graduation, Leon High School. We graduate that evening, which is why your meeting will be at 3:00 PM. So it is a little nostalgic for me, but I am so excited and opportunistic for the optimistic, wrong word choice, optimistic for the future ahead and I cannot wait to see the new individuals who are to take our position in the weeks to come. Thank you.
Don't you all just want to stand up and say amen? Well, you can't graduate, first of all, because we don't want you to leave. We want you to stay here with us and be this enthusiastic every other Tuesday so you'll just ripple effect through the room, just enthusiasm.
Try to be a bright spot. I know we've all had long days at work.
Have to ask Mr. Epstein and Mr. Henry about him not graduating or not.
Landon, where are you going to school?
Yeah.
Well, I have not made any official decisions as of yet, however, I have been offered a full ride by the University of Miami. I have been offered a full ride by Howard University up in Washington DC, as well as a full ride by the Florida State University right here in Tallahassee. So I have a decision to make in the, in the weeks to come, for sure.
Well, one, one school is going to be very, very, very lucky to get you. And Leon County Schools was very, very lucky to have you.
Yes, ma'am. The future president is going to be attending one of their schools, they just don't know it yet.
I'm not going to try to boost your confidence anymore because I think you're good. Anybody else want a little boost here?
I think I do, Madam Chair and Mrs. Superintendent. I really think we need to go ahead and tie him up and down now so that he can come back to Leon County School.
Oh, yes.
First, and then go off and do some of those wonderful other things he's going.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Bring that education back home.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And that's, like I said, I'm building my legacy right now in terms of affecting others and using my voice that I've been blessed with in order to inspire others to do the same, to follow after me. We were just actually holding voting yesterday at my school and every single last student, I was probably pestering them in terms to go and vote so that we can kind of begin to prepare students now for the real world. It's too often that we see us as young people not going out to vote, not, especially with us being the young people, we are the ones who will inherit the future. And so that's why yesterday I was out there screaming my head off, even if I'm not, even my name is not on the ballot, need to go and vote, go have your voice heard because at the end of the day, if you don't vote, you can't complain.
That's it.
So that's, that's what I was pushing at Leon and that's what I'm going to be trying to push for every high school, so.
Awesome.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You got to keep it real with the students.
We thank you.
Thank you so much for the information.
Of course.
Enthusiasm, we'll see you one more time.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. You all have a good evening.
Well, yeah, we'll shake your hand, too.
Yes, exactly.
All right. Title I Advisory Council, good luck, Marie Claire.
So cruel. No, but you know, after.
Dewanna's loving it like a gutter.
After all these months of following and up after Landon, I decided to bring my own superstar.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Ms. Edwards. Talithia Edwards is also a member of the Title I Advisory Council. She's actually Superintendent Hannah's appointee, community appointee. And I wanted to make sure that I wasn't going to be all alone up here. So we, we did have a meeting in April and I don't have that much to report. We're organizing ourselves around task forces, following on the, the conversation that we had with you at, at an agenda meeting back in March. And at the last school board meeting, I promised you guys an abbreviated report of, of that longer report. And so this is what Ms. Edwards and I are here to do tonight, give you a very quick overview of, and everyone, of the report that we presented to the school board on, I think it was March 26th. Okay, so, does it show up on a screen?
There you go.
There, it's there.
Okay, great. So, and we're going to do this really quickly. I know we have a lot to do tonight. The Title I Advisory Council was created about two years ago and the reason that we thought it was going to be a useful council is because we wanted a group of people, community members, principals, teachers, parents, school board member appointees, and especially also community organization representatives to come together and look at the issues that are especially of concern in Title I schools. And we didn't have that kind of a body district-wide for Title I schools. And so we created the Title I Advisory Council and we've been meeting monthly. As I said, we have representation from, from all of those, those people, those groups. And we are here to assist the school board, assist the superintendent, assist the principals in trying to think about how best to both spend the Title I funds, but also how to really connect our Title I schools and their communities, as we will get to in a, in a little bit. So this is a map of Tallahassee and the orange part, I realize it's small for you all to see, but the orange part is our Title I zone, school zones. So all of those schools in those zones are Title I schools and the blue is the non-Title I schools. The dots are the schools, elementary, middle, high, and the red is, the color indicates the school grade. The dark blue is A schools, the pale blue, you can barely see on the margin with the orange zones, are the B schools, the red are the C schools, and the pale orange are the couple of D schools that we have in Leon County. And these are 2017 school grades. And then this is a map of our minority representation in our schools. And so the pale orange is the most high percentage of minority students, the darker is a little less high percentage of minority, and the dark blue is, is, so the dark blue and the dark orange are sort of the most integrated schools and the pale blue is majority white. Again, the numbers are there, but I, I get that it's hard to see. Okay, so what we've done here is we've, we want to illustrate how the school grades have, okay, now it's on here. Sorry, the school, so the circles are non-Title I schools, later on you'll see squares. You don't see any right now because these are A schools and all of our A schools are non-Title I schools. And on the Y axis is your percentage of white students and on the, on the X axis is the percentage of students who are economically disadvantaged. So the A schools are predominantly our whitest schools and our most resourced schools, which of course comes as no surprise, but then we, we wanted to show how clustered the, the school grades are. So then this is our, these are our B schools. We have one square, which means that it's a Title I school and it's a B school. It's actually, and I'm not, I even labeled these on purpose, so these are the B schools. Then the C schools, the C schools are all Title I schools. And of course, we've now moved to the sort of more disadvantaged end of the scale and more minority as well, except for the two schools that are higher up, which, which are Woodville and Fort Braden, which are more, have a larger percentage of white students. And then our D schools, which are in with the mix there. So what, what we've been looking at, I mean, it's such a complicated issue and I know that you guys know this and I know that this is something that you're working really hard on and we're so happy to be at the table working with you and the people at our table come from all over and it's a really vibrant community to be working on this issue. It's a complicated issue because most people will say, well, of course, the least well-resourced students are going to do the least well on the test scores and the test scores give you your school grade. But we feel like we can't accept that. We feel like something has to be done to make sure that those students have equal access to quality education and that we're not dictating the way that we teach these kids because of the school grade. And where it becomes complicated is that, of course, the school grade is only an academic measure and we are trying to raise the school grades in those, in those schools, but we, we shouldn't try to do it by only focusing on the tests, that is such a limited measure. Because the vicious circle is that when a school buckles down on a test, on the test prep, the students who, whose parents want them to have access to a more well-rounded education will leave those schools and those schools will have an even more difficult time improving their school grade. It's a vicious circle, it's complicated, and I so appreciate that we're all, we're all paying attention to this because we don't want it to be okay that all of our Title I schools are C and D schools. So we actually wanted, so these are things, and again, I know the school boards heard all this and we're trying to go quickly around a difficult issue or a complicated issue. These are, and I'm going to let Ms. Edwards take over here, but when we say that these are recommendations, please keep in mind that we're a very new body, that we are thinking through these with you, that we in large part are saying, these are things we need to look at. We're not necessarily saying, these are the solutions. We really want to be paying attention to how we're already doing things and some of, some of these things are self-evident as well and some of them are a little bit more complicated and, and we want to, we realize that there's agreement that these are the things to focus on in terms of improving the access to quality education for all students in Leon County. Can I, I just want to add one thing about not having labeled the circles and the squares. We're not pointing fingers at any school and it's a systemic problem that needs systemic solutions. It's not just something that we can fix in one school or in one community. And I wanted to illustrate that by not labeling schools. I know that, I, I'm more than happy to share the information when we do need to look at the fine grain, but I think that that was an important way to illustrate the map of Leon County schools right now.
Okay, hello. Just a few of the recommendations and like Marie said, we're going to go kind of quickly because you all have already heard this. One of the recommendations is to strengthen and increase access to quality school readiness programs for children. We understand that early childhood helps close the achievement gap, which is prevalent in children entering Title I schools. And coming from these different populations, encourage the use of VPK funded in the summer before kindergarten. I think this is a key educational piece for parents, to help parents understand that if, if they're able to utilize the VPK funding in the summer and they don't have to use it during the school year, that this provides a continuum of care, so to speak, for the, for the children entering kindergarten, they have no breaks, they don't lose any information, they go into kindergarten a little more ready. They go into kindergarten a little more ready to succeed. The next one is intervene as early as possible in elementary schools. That's self-explanatory. Prioritize elementary schools and the allocation of Title I funding. We know that the more we emphasize and strengthen the resources in the elementary school level, then we will see better successes in the middle and the high school, and the high school levels. Best practices. Examine best practices at A-grade schools and Title I schools in this state. So, we know that there are Title I schools that have A grades in this state. So, we need to see what they're doing, what they're doing well, and how can we in Leon County implement some of those things, and also do, you know, see how they'll work for us. Replicate innovative and successful strategies and practices. Right here in our own district, we have schools that are doing really innovative things that are great. I love when I come to meetings like this because we're able to hear what other schools are doing, because most times, we're kind of in our own silos, and we're working in our own areas, and we know where we're deficient and where we're succeeding, but we don't know what else is working. So, it's really good to explore and replicate what other schools are doing right here in Leon County. Explore incentives used to attract and retain teachers and parents. That's a big thing. The teachers at TAC, that's a big thing that they talk about, you know, being incentivized to stay and serve the kids. Most of the teachers are in Title I schools, and they deal with the day-to-day because they love it. They have a heart for what they do. And just because you have a heart for it doesn't mean that you can't put a value and incentivize people to stay. Also, strengthen Title I school advisory councils and PTOs. Of course, I'm at Bond. We have now, I think, the last number, 718 students, yet we have less than 10% of parents participating. So, we really need to find innovative ways to strengthen the SAC and the PTO so that we can have not only just buy-in, but ownership into what's going on in our schools. And last slide, partnerships. Develop partnerships among Title I schools. We all know, it's big, a lot of schools and businesses and partnerships are hard to come by, but learning to find innovative ways to partner with people to help strengthen and expand the resources that we already have is a great opportunity for us. Strengthen feeder patterns, feeder patterns in Title I school communities. We know that Title I students typically travel and transfer to other Title I schools. And so what we need to do is definitely strengthen the schools within that Title I feeder pattern so that each school is strong. You know, that parents will, if they're transitioning from Bond to Sable Palm, or Sable Palm to Hartsfield, that they know that each school in its own right will be strong enough to provide what that child needs. And lastly, collaborate with businesses, nonprofits, and government agencies. It's been important for me, not only as a parent, but as a community leader, to integrate into schools. That's where the majority of the population is. I serve in a Bond community. Most of the residents are going to have children that are in that school. And so we've had a change in administration who's been as receptive to community involvement as the previous principal. And what we've been able to see, when you allow the community and different entities to come in and integrate, is that it only strengthens the environment in the school. Resources are there for the parents. The kids are able to see and being exposed to individuals and experiences that they may not have had opportunities to do. So, that's a really, a really good opportunity for us to collaborate with different entities outside of Leon County. All right, thank you.
So, yeah, we want to thank you. But thank you, Talithia. Thank you to everyone at the district who's been super supportive in providing us the data that we needed to really distill all this. Thank you to the school board that's been supportive in, by appointing people who have been very high contributors to the Title I Advisory Council, and also for allowing this report every month. Not this particular report, but me coming, even though it's after Landon. And really, also, thank you to the school district for everything that you're already doing. We know that in some of these cases, we're saying something that you're already doing, and we're just encouraging the school district to keep on doing that. And then in other areas, we want to kind of refocus our energies as a school district. I hope it wasn't too long. I hope it wasn't too boring.
No, no. Miss Lewis, I believe we have some comments, Ms. Lewis, Father.
Yes, Ms. Maria and Ms. Edwards, thank you. I know every month you came, and you gave an excellent report every month, so we knew what was going on. But I saw, I said, you know what? We can bring all that information, because I like data, and I like the way you all presented all this. This is all your hard work finding that you're able to bring to this board and this superintendent, what you have been doing all those months out there and gathering. And this is good data, good information that we can use. And right away, as Ms. Edwards stated, about starting with the learning early and pre-K and what we need, and closing the achievement gap. And that's the foundation that all our students, especially in the Title I, they really need it. And that's a good beginning. So, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all for your work. I know you're greatly appreciated by the board, and we look forward to what those recommendations are. I think we were all really excited. It wasn't just telling us what we already know. You guys are looking for solutions, and we are very grateful. Your work will not be for naught. We will, we look forward to implementing some of those changes. So, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the whole committee. John G. Riley House Museum partnership updates. I believe we have a few people with us, Ms. Barnes and another from the Riley House. So, I didn't realize, Ms. Barnes had just told me how many years we've had this partnership with the Riley House and Leon County schools. How many years?
Ever since I've been on the board.
I think longer than that, Ms. Lewis, Father.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Hannah, school board members. It's a pleasure to be here, and I have to ditto what Maria just said and some of the others. I commend the school district, Leon County School District, for the outstanding work that's being done. Here tonight has just been so uplifting to hear the treasures, the jewels that we have. And this, I'm sure, is just the tip of the iceberg. We represent the community. We are one of the nonprofits that was just referenced in the report. And what we wanted to do tonight was to come before you to give an update of the partnership that has existed for many years and had a great impact in a collective way, a combined way. Our program is ongoing, and we look forward to continuing, providing lessons and cultural experiences that enrich classroom instructions. We know there's a lot going on in the classroom, but sometimes it's good for students to get out and be able to engage in living history experiences. So, since 1997, this partnership has expanded and diversified in keeping with educational standards and innovations. So, I have with me tonight Michael Johnson, who is our education director. And this is the generation of trans over here that we speak of. So, Michael is just going to just walk us briefly through the programs that we provide. And again, we thank you for all that you do for this partnership.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Michael Johnson. Thank you for having me here. I'm excited to speak in front of you. You all should have a packet that has a number of information, a lot of information in there, rather. There is a booklet on the right side. I will be speaking swiftly, so you will be able to take that booklet home and possibly read up on as much of the information if you'd like to. On the left side, you'll have information of the longstanding relationship that you guys have had with us here at the Riley House, dating back decades, probably before I even got to a high school. What you're looking at on this screen is My Pride and Joy. It is our youth culture and computer literacy academic program. The program itself is a literacy-based program uniquely structured through cultural exposure and heritage education. Now, through YCLAP, we're able to do both engage and invest in the genius potential of our urban youth from low-income households, thereby being that proverbial bridge between the development of technology and literacy skills, as well as encouraging technology So, through cultural and computer literacy, we target educational issues and subject matter not reinforced in traditional classrooms, with a tangible goal of improving lives educationally, economically, and socially. Now, there are several moving parts to the YCLAP program. Those parts are Riley After School Club, our Blended Lives Program, our Heritage Education Program, the Power Up Summer Camp, and of course, our R3 Techies Program. The Riley After School Kids Program has been a partnership with, of course, you all at the school board and our Riley staff to engage students in a number of educational activities, some being cooperative activities, others being independent activity. The students have their power hour of homework help, then they branch off into a gamut of other activities like scavenger hunts, local historical sites, learning historical songs, creating written reports, oratorical presentations, postal boards of information they researched themselves. The program is designed to enhance the reading, writing, and analytical skills, and of course, the language skills of fourth and fifth graders. Now, I'm proud to tell you all that last year, 65% of our students improved by at least one letter grade in language arts. 55% of our students in our after-school program improved one letter grade in social studies, and just under 35% improved one letter grade in mathematics. And of course, in those other bars that you saw, there were students who also improved two-letter grades and three-letter grades in all of those subject matters. Now, our Blended Lives Program is a massive, massive, long, week-long component that involves every fourth grader in Leon County School District, and some parents, of course, visiting the Riley House, the Florida Historic Capitol, and Goodwood Museums, and other historical sites and landmarks to experience a heritage and cultural presentation. I know Superintendent, of course, came by this year. We appreciated him being there. Unfortunately, I couldn't speak to you. I had a few hundred students to take care of at the time. Beyond Blended Lives, we have our Heritage Education Program, where students get a firsthand introduction to histories, places, peoples, events, that helps shape the world as we know it today. This education exposure not only broadens their horizons culturally, historically, but by seeing firsthand what life was like in time periods past, students or children have a renewed appreciation for technology and information that's available today. Now, beyond these programs, we have our Summer Camp Program, and that allows students to strengthen their cultural and computer literacy skills and create and articulate using advanced technology and experience through entrepreneurship and other activities. Now, we'll see if this plays now, but our students are really challenged with a number of activities. And what you're seeing here is a stop-motion animation video, if this plays, to where the students created a script, they created the characters, they designed the background, they did the filming, and they all produced this. We're talking about ninth, nine-year-old, 10-year-old students who put this all together. And none of them had any idea how to do this ahead of time, but they were challenged. They were given an opportunity, and they were able to produce. Now, beyond that, the camp is a six-week camp. It's a partnership, again, at the Lincoln Neighborhood Center. And it's a camp that definitely makes a large impact in that community, like I mentioned before. Now, this is one of my favorite parts of the Riley, our YCLAP program. This program is an initiative that targets adolescents between grades six to eight to bridge the gap between literacy and technology. It's designed to unlock a potential of urban youth with diverse economic, social, and educational backgrounds by training students HTML coding, app development, digital illustrations, graphic designs, in addition to preparing students for the full implementation of computer-based testing in Leon County. Now, we're going to see if this other video plays here, but this is one of our campers. All of them are challenged. This young lady we're talking about is eight years old, okay? And she did that presentation in our museum at our spring break camp. And this is only after she built a Droid, built a Google Cardboard virtual reality headset, and presented its real-life applications, okay? We're talking about an eight-year-old, all right? Now, we have a number of different students who also have the ability to do these things. And I'm sure every school in Leon County has the ability to do these things. It's just that they need the exposure, they need the challenge, and they need the resource and people like Ms. Marie, who was here before, to expose them to these things. As I close here, by and large, we appreciate the support that we've had for years, and we would love to have your support for years to come. Now, socially, all of our, all of our programs definitely improves these students' social skills, their awareness in the community today, and most certainly improve their socioeconomic status by providing them the understanding of how the real word actually works. See, when you start to give them these real-life applications in high school, you've already missed the curve. Statistics tell you that if, not by the third or fourth grade, if these students struggle reading, they are over 80% more likely to be incarcerated in their lives. So, let's make that, let's make the, this education and these programs available to them early and continue our partnership. Now, that is the end of my spiel. I hope I wasn't too long, and I hope I didn't bore you to death. Thank you all so much.
Did a great job. Thank you.
May I say something to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Barnes. Ms. Barnes is the founder and CEO of the Riley House Museum. And she, after she retired, she wanted to do the museum, and it's been successful. And she wanted to connect with the education component. And because of the Riley House Museum, Leon County School District, we've just flown because of you. And you've been at several schools. Now, you're at Oak Ridge School, and you're doing third grade through fifth grade.
Absolutely.
Okay, you've been at Riley Elementary School. What other schools you've been?
We've done Fairview, we've had programs at MIMS.
Okay, so Superintendent Hannah and board, she's been all over our district with our students and making very sure. And I like the data that you presented, too, showing that we're not just there playing games, but the letter grade goes up. I understand the language art, it went up. Social studies and mathematics, these are critical curriculums that when the grade, when the letter grade goes up, this means the students are feeling good, and they're successful because of the work that you are doing in our school system. And we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And be sure, please, to look through the handout. And you are an exemplary school district. According to the Florida statute. And Riley was very pivotal in helping to make that.
Thank you so much. Friends from Riley House, we appreciate you and all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Michael Johnson.
All right, before we move on, I just want to alert everyone that we've made a few changes tonight to the agenda. We traditionally have persons to be heard at the very end of the meeting, and we know that there's a lot of parents here, moms and dads and teachers that need to be at school tomorrow. So, we've moved persons to be heard up in the meeting. So, any topic you're speaking on, the three minutes that you have, and we will ask, please, that you hold to your three minutes. This is not time for us to debate with you, but take your three minutes to say what you need to say. If it is an agenda item, if it's not an agenda item, this is the time to be, to speak. This is your persons-to-be-heard time, which is traditionally at the end of the meeting. We hope that helps those of you tonight that are here for the charter school issues. Excuse me. I also want to say that I know we had a, there was a commentary in the paper last week about some very hot topics in our community, and this was one of them. And we were complimented by the Democrat on being a very cordial group. And I hope that we continue, and I know we're going to continue that tonight, that we have two very, very passionate sides of this argument, each with a very valid argument, and each just as concerned about kids in this community as the other. So, I hope that we can continue in that spirit. And sometimes, as the superintendent says, sometimes when we disagree, we have, we just have to agree to disagree. But we do have to all move forward together. So, I hope that we can do that tonight, green and red, public charter, whatever. we can do that tonight, green and red, public charter, whatever, whatever it is that I know that will leave here tonight in that spirit. In that same vein, and I want to thank Ms. Rasmussen for making the suggestion, those of you that go to the legislature, when they have committee meetings and people are there to be heard on a topic, they have, you can wave in support. If you would like your, to use your three minutes tonight and just wave your hand, yes, I'm supportive of this issue, or I'm opposed to this issue, you may do that, and we'll take note of that. You don't have to. Yeah, I'm not taking your three minutes. You can, you can take your three minutes to speak, but if I call your name, or Ms. Williams calls your name, and you would like to wave in support, just wave your hand, and I'll ask you, are you supporting this, or are you opposing it? We'll take note of that and move on to the next speaker if you feel that someone's already stated what you need to say. Again, it is your right to take that three minutes. I'm not taking that away from you. So, with that said, we'll move on to the first speaker.
Madam Chair, we actually have one speaker that is not related to charter school, so we're going to take that person first.
Okay.
And then move on. Bobby Powell, if you could please come up to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and after that, you will have three minutes.
Good evening.
Evening.
How's everybody doing? Chairman, everybody else in every respective places, everyone here today. Thank you for having me. Please forgive me if...
Sir, if we could give you your name and address for the record, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. My name is Bobby Powell. I'm located at 5401 South Curtin Road, Suite 310 in Orlando, Florida. That's where we're headquartered. The name of the organization is Forsaken, which is a nonprofit organization for at-risk youth. Also located at 4700 Millennium Boulevard, Suite 175 in Orlando, Florida as well. I also have a security agency as well, and what I look to do is to combine the both of those. Please forgive me, my hearing is a little off. Look, combine the nonprofit with the security agency for the at-risk youth, and what we, what we aim to do is to give these schools a full security assessment within the county, everything from resource protection to your physical security, to your active shooter, bomb threat, suspicious package training as well. And we also have a vision program within the nonprofit that will focus on specialized security training for the students, better behavioral patterns, increase self-esteem, problem-solving skills, and helping them to locate an individual purpose. We have also partnered with Soinni Circles, which is a STEM and self-awareness initiative for young, for young girls, and we have also partnered with some mom groups down in Orange County, Brevard County, and Volusia County. A lot of their concerns deal over the Guardian Program. I'm unsure if you all are aware of that.
We're familiar. Thank you.
Or not. But that is what we aim to do. We could really use your help. We want to give this to the entire state of Florida. I myself was an at-risk youth back in '94, '95. I actually attended Rickards High School. I was probably one of the students that the teachers probably didn't, probably, probably didn't see too often, but I did manage to graduate. I also managed to get my bachelor's degree in criminal justice with the focus of management as well. And what I aim to do is just to help these kids. So whether, whether it's a group of individuals here, or anybody, or any other organization here, I look to partner and bring everybody together in the, with the entire state of Florida. I just want to help the kids at the end of the day. So we do have some groups behind us, and we look to issue these services for the, for the youth at risk, as well as a security perspective as well. So please, I have some visual aids that I can hand out with some contact information as well. So look forward to working with anybody. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
You didn't, did you drive all the way from Orlando for this three minutes?
Yes.
Awesome. So John Hunkyard is our Chief of Safety and Security, and Chris Petley is our Communications Coordinator. If you would, give your contact information to them. You got it already? Awesome. We'll be reaching out to you and sit down and have a much longer-than-three-minute discussion about your program and some of your ideas, and appreciate you taking the time and, and energies to drive up here, and tell you're, you're passionate about what you do, and we would look forward to entertaining some of your proposals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next speaker is Lynn Jones. Give us your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Lynn Jones, 3211 Notre Dame Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Professional educator, 33 years. Currently, a teacher at Bond Elementary, teaching 3rd grade students. Slipping, falling, tumbling through the cracks right now. Teaching is a noble profession. Choice is good. Tutoring a student who has Fs in a mailbox. He's failing 3rd grade. I worked at Governor's Charter for three years. I was a VAM teacher. I worked with ESE students. My students are doing well. Transition is difficult. Trying to keep kids walking in a straight line. I'm working with my students. Cornell notes, literature groups, cursive, wonders. I have a question about that. Choice is good. But, you know, even supporting the community, doing things in my community, in the Bond community, it's difficult. After school on weekends, I found myself last year at a Title I school and received a pink slip. Today, I found out that choice still is good, because I received a pink slip today. Maybe it's because I speak my mind. Maybe I won't be able to teach in Leon County schools anymore, but I will still support the students. Choice is good.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jennifer Sullivan. Give us your name, address, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Sullivan. I'm at 1068 Winter Lane in Tallahassee, Florida. I have been a teacher at FSU. I've taught at a private school. I've been at a charter school here in Leon County, and now I am currently at Rickards High School. I am here to tell you that it's challenging not having the support of a union. I, I was part of the Graduate Student Union, creating the Graduate Student Union at FSU, and we felt like that was very important. We got a lot, a lot of great things for the graduate students there at FSU, things like money for healthcare, right? Then I went into the private school and the charter school, and unfortunately, there are things in your contracts that you can't negotiate. You don't have collective bargaining. For example, the charter school that I just left, there was, there was a line in there that said, "If you don't give 60 days' notice, then they will charge you $7,500." A teacher, a teacher's salary. $7,500 for not providing 60 days of notice for leaving. It was just, it was very depressing when I looked through my contract, and I couldn't negotiate. If I tried to negotiate, like one teacher did at the end of last school year, he didn't come back. There really is no way to negotiate when you are working at a charter school. It's very difficult, right? It's challenging. And so I just, I want all of us to keep in mind that charter schools can fill gaps, right? The charter school that I just left was very high-performing. I had a fantastic cohort that I worked with. I absolutely love my coworkers. But what I really enjoy about being with the county now is that I have the protection of collective bargaining for my professional career. This is my career. And so we really need to keep that in mind, particularly when we are considering diverting money from, right, the regular public schools and protected teachers to charter schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Portia Knight. Give us your name and address. You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Portia Knight. I'm located at 2937 Olson Lending Road, Tallahassee, Florida. Good evening. It's an honor to stand before you all today, Superintendent Rockingham Hannah, Madam Clerk. I have two children, and education is very, very important to my family and I. I am not here to say that I do not support the public schools, but I do support a school that will emphasize literacy. My son struggled with grammar and reading comprehension, and I know how important that is for his educational journey. Therefore, I support Tallahassee Classical School. Every child should have the right to attend a specific school for their specific needs, and I ask all to allow the creation of Tallahassee Classical School, so every parent can choose what is best for their child. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Shari Gawnter. Give us your name, address. You have three minutes.
My name is Shari Gawnter, and I live at 2213 Pontiac Drive, Tallahassee, Florida, and I am a Leon County School Title I school kindergarten teacher of 16 years. That's what I've been doing all 16 years, and all in Title I. Two weeks ago, I spoke here before you and encouraged you to keep public school funds with public schools. I asked you to do your part and take a stand. I asked you to stop the drain of resources and turn that conversation back to what we could do to improve our current systems. Today's message is much the same, but still stronger. I ask you to vote no, and let us return the conversation of building bridges, and please, stand up for public schools, stand with our superintendent, with our students and families, and stand with our teachers. You have an opportunity today, having given yourself two extra weeks to consider your options, today to be that voice that says no. You may not be able to stop this ridiculous crawl of charters that's attempting to take over and kill our public school systems. You can be brave and take a stand today and say that it is not okay, regardless of the next steps and outcomes. I realize that some of you may be in conflict between what you believe is the intent of the law and what is the right thing to do. It is time to take a stand now, win or lose, and do what is right. Vote no. There is no need for another school or two. Vote no. But there is a need for us to shore up what we currently have and make it better and stronger. Don't be fooled. We all know what this charter school expansion is all about. It's politics. It's a money game, and those at the top are making all of these crushing mandates and are systematically trying to tie our hands. It is deliberate, and it's about money. They have no interest in the success of the public school systems. It's politics, and the children will be our losers. Public school education is the cornerstone of democracy. Public schools are here now to give everyone a chance. Charters are a chance for some, and they are fueling rather than helping issues of segregation and opportunity and set us up as winners and losers, draining the best and the brightest, and handpicking their zip codes. Public school education's mission is to level the playing field for all. We can accomplish that mission with less, we can't do it with less and less money. The charter schools in general see a path only to their own successes and not to the bigger picture. These charters and all the others that will follow, they may be amazing, but let them shine on their own dime. You can stand up for public school education and for democracy today. At this moment, I am speaking directly to you, Ms. Rasmussen. You are my representative for my school, and I am speaking to you, Ms. Butler. You are my representative for my home. I am speaking to you and asking you to stand up and represent me today. Vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Parker Campbell. Parker Campbell? Give us your name, address. You have three minutes.
Parker Campbell, 3646 Ocleyon Drive, Tallahassee, Florida, 32312. Our society, and indeed our schools, are governed by rules and laws. This is not a new concept, and we all agree that we should follow rules and laws. There is also an expectation that the governed will adhere to the laws established by those elected to lead them. The school board has similar expectations for its students. This is from the Leon County Schools Student Code of Conduct. And while the passages are lifted from the text, I do not believe the context is lost in doing so. I believe these statements can stand on their own. Belief statement: We believe in citizenship. Leon County Schools honors the diversity of our community by working as a team to ensure the educational success of all our students, and by living up to our professional responsibilities to promote democratic principles. Rules of conduct, expectations: The board shall require each student of the district to adhere to the student conduct, student code of conduct, student discipline code adopted by the board. Such rules shall require that students, E, obey constituted authority and respond to those who hold the authority. Each of you took an oath when you became a member of the school board. Quote, "I, Rosie Ann Wood, affirm that I will support and protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida, and that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state, and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of school board member on which I am now about to enter." There are certain laws that none of us like. Perhaps driving, perhaps lawfully restricted to 45 on Thomasville Road at 8M, but that is the law, and we ought to follow it. The oath is a pledge to follow the law and perform your duties by that law. It is not a pledge to follow only those laws with which you agree. It is important to make the distinction that approving this charter application is not endorsement of the school, of the charter school system, of the school choice, or even the process, rather than acknowledgement of what the state of Florida requires of you as members of the Leon County School Board. I do not think it is the school with which you have issue, not its founders, and not the curriculum. It is not the school, it is the law that is at issue. However, punishing those who have done all that the law requires is not the way to change it. I ask you, I implore you, do what is right by the law, though you may not agree with it, to do what is right by these two local women, to honor their diligent and legal efforts by acknowledging the process you swore to uphold. Approve this application and work in the appropriate avenues to change the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Joy Lewis. Joy Lewis? Give us your name, address. You've got three minutes.
Okay. My name is Joy Lewis. My address is 8031 Havana Highway, excuse me, Havana, Florida, by way of Springwood Elementary. My daughter and I would like to stand in opposition of the proposed charter school's adoption, and to provide a point of clarification for those who may have a misconception of the shades of red within this room. It was said that, oh, that's LCTA, they're for the teachers, whereas we are for the students. I want to reroute those thoughts, that we are LCTA, indeed, but we are a union of collective bodies that are united for a coming good, those being our students as well as our teachers. We are here to support the students who are taught by the teachers, who would be, in turn, be affected by the adoption, in fact, if it passes. Furthermore, we are here to stand in support of students who have to play catch-up when they enter into our public schools from our local charters, and to represent our teachers that work tirelessly to teach them, as well as drain our personal fundings to incentivize them. I personally stand as a parent, a single parent, who is also a teacher, and has been now for 10 years, that I have to use personal funds out of my own bank account and take away from my own children to help those children that are in my classroom. So the thought of money being taken away from our schools for our children, all of our children, it touches me close, because I, I just think of my own, and I think of what I do for my own at my school site. And I know that I'm not the only teacher who has to go to Walmart or Sam's to give a treat, or give a snack, or provide a meal, or provide clothing, or shoes. So the, the adoption is very close to me, and I hope that you consider those things and understand that I'm just one person standing here, but we are all one voice that are standing in support of hopefully you, and hopefully you also support us. And we are here to support not only our teachers, again, but our students, because as we are our teachers, as we are the teachers, we impact those students. So the decisions that are made by you all impacts us, which in turn impacts them. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jamie Carbonell. The next speaker is Jamie Carbonell.
Jamie Carbonell and my address is 9816 Thunder Hill Trail. It's the first day of school. The bell has rung and kids are scurrying to their desks, full of excitement and anticipation as to what the school year holds. We've all been there. It's this amazing combination of exhilaration and nervousness, no matter how many times you've had that first day of school. As educators, we introduce ourselves and work on developing a rapport with our students from day one. At the heart of this rapport is trust, integrity, and a willingness to do what's right, even when it's the hardest thing to do. It is a part of best practice to discuss the logistics of operations as well as classroom expectations. As educators, we are held to a higher standard. Not only are we supposed to do what's in the best interest of students, but we are also supposed to uphold the rules set forth by administration and the district at large. Like a school, our government creates laws that are in the best interest of the people. As citizens, we are supposed to abide by them or work to change them within the proper channels. With that said, we are asking you today that you follow the law and approve our school, even if it is under protest. Let's be models to our students and change the law through our state legislature. Our system works best when we work out our differences together and through the appropriate measures. As the highest elected officials within our school district, we are asking you today to set an example for our students. Teach them about doing what's right by following the law and working to change it if you do not like it. Just as the student who does not follow the rules hurts the entire class, if our school board knowingly does not follow the law, it hurts our entire school district. Be the models of what is right and vote yes on Tallahassee Classical School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, William Millard.
Good evening. William Millard, 4080 West Bugalview Drive, and I am the principal of Buck Lake Elementary School. I appreciate the responsibility that this board faces in responding to our superintendent's recommendation that these charter schools not be approved. You all want to do the right thing and that's admirable. There are a few ideas that have been expressed over the last month that I'd like to speak to. First, an idea that keeps getting presented is that there's a need for charter schools in our area because our schools lack innovation. This could not be further from the truth. Our teachers are using the latest research, implementing the newest technology, and helping students get ready for jobs that have not even been imagined yet. These educators are attending conferences, writing grants, and sharing with others so that the impact of their passion goes beyond their classroom walls. I'd invite anybody who feels that our schools lack innovation to come for a visit. I'd be happy to show you how our students are learning robotics, coding, problem solving, and collaboration at early ages. I'd also be glad to share with you how these practices are positively impacting our students who have not traditionally done well because they have learning difficulties, many of whom have come back to our traditional public schools from charter schools. I cannot think of a more innovative approach than reaching all of our students. Another idea that's been asserted recently is that those who oppose these two schools are afraid of competition and want to limit choice. I disagree with that. My school has many students who attend because of school choice from all over our county and from other counties. I think school choice is important for our families, but what I am afraid of is how adding more schools will affect our school system as a whole when we already have schools that are not at capacity. Our school district gets scrutinized anytime there's a perceived waste of taxpayer dollars. How is this any different? School choice was intended to empower the disenfranchised, not to publicly fund private school settings. These schools have not demonstrated that they will positively impact students who need it most, but rather will give private school settings paid for with public school dollars. The last idea that I take issue with is a statement made by a gentleman at the last meeting. He said he had four kids and that meant that he could choose to either send them to private school or retire someday. Well, that statement struck me for a few reasons. Number one, I'm not a product of public schools. I went to private school from kindergarten through 12th grade and my single mother, she fought so that I could do that. She's enjoying her retirement now. Also, I have four kids. Three of them attend public schools and our youngest will as well. They are not getting a second-hand education. I'd ask the board to take a moment to consider the precedent that this sets for our community. This year, it's two charter schools. Well, will it be next year?
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marshall Ogletree?
Hi, I'm Marshall Ogletree. I reside at 3112 O'Brien Drive. Chairperson Striplin, members of Leon County School Board, and Superintendent Hannah. I'm a taxpayer in Leon County and I have a son at Mumford Middle School. Also was a lobbyist for the Florida Education Association for 22 years. I remember the passage of the initial bill in the 90s. I remember the legislative promises that we're going to pass on all these great new educational trends to our public schools. I remember the fact that the, there would be no funded needing, no funding needed for facilities for charter schools because we're going to find empty storefronts for classrooms for charter schools. And that the charters would be sponsored by the school boards and be accountable to the school board. That was the 1990s. My, how times have changed. Not much of any reform has ever filtered down to traditional public schools from charter schools. Charters now have access to state capital funds and your capital millage funds. And yes, sponsorships by other entities have virtually little accountability to the school board or to the taxpayer. Meanwhile, former legislators make huge fees lobbying in support of for-profit charter schools. I have seen it myself over and over again. And there never has been a conflict of interest for a legislator to own or operate a charter school or have their spouse on the charter's board. Funny how politics work. HB 7055, just passed session, saw 11 charter school provisions. And now the Florida Constitutional Revision Commission has log-rolled onto the ballot in November, a proposal that combines civic literacy, school board term limits, with your right to supervise and control charter schools. As a taxpayer, I urge your support for Superintendent Hannah's position. I want my tax dollars supporting accountable public schools and trust your stewardship of my tax dollars to ensure my son and other students in Leon County schools get the highest possible quality education. I do not want my school taxes supporting for-profit charter schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Lee?
My name is Donna Lee. I live at 8967 Winged Foot Drive. Board, Superintendent. I have 12 years of classroom teaching experience, both in public and private schools, and a master's degree in curriculum and instruction. My husband and I moved to Leon County 30 years ago with two small children. Our children were enrolled in Leon County Public Schools for five years. During those five years, we were devoted to their public school education. I worked countless volunteer hours. I served on many committees, including yours. And we were even involved in the parent petition to build Child's High School because at the time, in the early 90s, the school board was opposed. After five years, we realized the system was not going to change anytime soon and withdrew the children. Leon County is filled with parents like us. Why do parents leave the public schools? They still have to pay the school taxes. And for most parents, private school tuition is financially a burden. So why do they leave or maybe never even try public schools? I believe it's because of what I witnessed at your last board meeting. Public schools have a tendency to circle the wagons, to protect mediocrity, rather than to aspire to reach the potential of every student. High-level, content-rich school curriculum should be the desire of every single school board member and school employee. So here I am, a grandmother now, hoping and praying that public schools can meet the needs of my grandchildren. We've paid our taxes, our school taxes, for 30 years. I want to be optimistic. I believe in public school. I love, I love teachers. I was a teacher. But here's what I've seen so far. I see a school board willing to dismiss the advice of excellent and highly respected attorneys and a superintendent willing and ready to defy state law so as to deny all students a chance to break out of the mediocre box that you so fiercely protect. The superintendent stated that the school population has not grown in Leon County and that there is space available and therefore he cannot support charter schools. Ask yourself, where are these students going? Everyone knows the population of Tallahassee has grown. Homeschools and private schools are thriving. So accept these charter schools and I promise you, many parents and their children will come back into the school system. Accept these charter schools.
Time.
And allow them to prove to you that they can.
Thank you.
Reach the potential of all students. We want to be on your team.
Thank you, ma'am.
Cheryl Collier-Brown?
Good evening. I had prepared my speech, but after listening to everyone, my view has not changed. I am thoroughly in support of Superintendent Hannah and Chairperson Striplin. I'm hoping and praying that the rest of y'all can have a majority vote this evening. I am sitting right there being empathetic, angry, and somewhat insulted because of the fact, if you look around us, I'm a very well-prodicated public school, Riley, Griffin, Leon. Sitting here, hearing Lana's spoke did my heart well because that was my alumnus. But I'm sitting here listening to all of this rhetoric about our schools and some of this stuff that you all want us to teach, we can't teach because of testing. When I was in school, I learned about mythology. And I was at John G. Riley Elementary School. So if we could take, you're taking one thing from us and giving us something else. So I am just fed up with the charter school. I'm fed up with testing. So we need to, and another thing, some of this that want, you all want to be taught at the charter schools and the public schools, I learned it at home. My daddy got off of work every night and taught me my multiplication tables. My mama made sure that I had encyclopedias to read about Greek mythology and et cetera, et cetera. So some of this burden that you're putting on us, public school teachers, you need to let it go and work at home or get somewhere and work at home with your kids. We can't do everything because we can't do it all because of the testing. So I'm not going to sit here and read my spiel. I'm speaking from my heart. And I do not want to see any more charter schools in Leon County. We have something for everybody at school. We have Elvahart if you have a special needs child. We have Rookers if you have a high academic achiever. We have Flor, Fairview Middle School, that's another one. Arts, we have Appalachian, Rock. I think I went through this list last week. So we just need to let it go and let us have our way and keep the charter schools out because right now we have something that is closed. Evening rolls, closed. Just read about Governor's Charter. They keep running back to us in ghost and took our money, then they come back and want some more of our resources. Am I correct? All right then. So what's going to happen with the two that won't come in here now? Think about it.
Thank you, Ms. Collier-Brown.
Next speaker, Jana Sager. Just give us your name and address.
My name is Jana Sager and I am the board chair of Tallahassee Classical School. My address is 836 Madeira Circle. Members of the school board, Superintendent Hannah, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I understand that you are frustrated with current charter school law and that you're concerned with how approving Tallahassee Classical School will affect the finances of Leon County schools. However, I want to point you to some charter school legal history that will hopefully inform your decisions tonight. After all, classical education is, among other things, a study of history in order to learn lessons from it. But first, let me mention about the charter school appeal process. If a charter school is denied, the charter school may appeal to the State Board of Education. If the state orders the school board to approve the school, the school board may appeal to a district court. That is what happened in the case of the School Board of Osceola County versus UCP of Central Florida, which was decided in April 2005. I'll be reading selected portions of the opinion from the Fifth District Court of Appeal. The legislature clearly intended the denial of a charter school application to be based on more than projections of future financial impact on other schools. Otherwise, each district could prevent the construction of new charter schools by simply claiming financial hardship. It cannot be disputed that UCP's application met all the statutory requirements. The school board failed to demonstrate that it had good cause to deny UCP's application. The comments contained in the record suggest that the school board denied the application in an effort to prompt the Florida Legislature to change charter school law. In that case, Osceola County School Board lost. The Florida Board of Education's decision was upheld by the court and that charter school opened in Kissimmee. It's still there today, serving students in Osceola County. This case proves that denying charter applications for financial impact reasons as a way to impact legislation doesn't work. Leon County School Board's policy on charter schools states, "The school board may authorize the establishment of charter schools in Leon County for the following purposes: to improve student learning and academic achievement, increase learning opportunities for all students with special emphasis on low-performing students in reading, encourage the use of innovative learning methods, and increase educational choice options for students." Tallahassee Classical School has already met the requirements set forth in charter school statute and your charter school review committee has recommended our approval. Your own policy says that charter schools may be established for purposes that we will meet. Please, we urge you, follow your own policy, adhere to the law, be fiscally responsible with our taxpayer dollars, even if you do so under protest. I urge you to vote yes and approve Tallahassee Classical School. Thank you. I brought copies.
Next speaker, Francine Hearn.
My name is Francine Hearn, 3532 Raymond Deal Road, 32309. Superintendent Hannah, board members. I have a lot of things that are going on in my mind that have come up over the last few weeks, but even tonight. And I would like to say, when we talk about the law, the Constitution right now, until it changes, says that you have, you are the decision-making bodies for our, our local schools. And it also says that, we just heard about grounds for an appeal and a lawsuit and all of that, but I want to talk about where you may find your defense if this appeal should come through. And I think that it's what Superintendent Hannah has already said. Classical education, Plato, when we look back at that, the hallmark, one of the hallmarks of, although I find the classical education definition a little strange, but one of the hallmarks of classical education and of the Greeks is logic, pure and simple logic. And a simple syllogism would tell you, two schools in Leon County, two, two applications in Leon County for charter schools. The Florida Department of Education has said that Leon County does not qualify for two schools because we've asked. Therefore, two more schools should not be approved. That's just plain and simple logic. And that's what. And that's what the Greeks believed in, okay? So please, it's very simple. What the state has told us is no two more schools. Therefore, these applications should be denied, and you still have the power. And even if it's in protest, send a message. Send a message to the state legislators that the laws do need to change. You don't have, you could, there's always what we call, also from classical education, civil disobedience. Make a point and keep our public schools safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize. I've got a lesson for tonight, and it's been a while since I've been in the classroom. So I'll make sure to have these materials. So I utilized a little bit in my fifth grade, oh, Scott Mazur, 3319 Dartmoor Drive. I beat you to it. So I used a little bit of my bar model knowledge of fifth-grade math, and I put down for you a little student funding as far as fixed costs and to what is people and programs that go to them. In the first one, 2017-18, it shows you that even though that bar is right there, it's actually smaller than the other two bars for 1819 because our funding is greater. But as fixed costs go up, less money goes to people and programs. That's why the bottom bar is smaller. And then as charters go ahead and take funds out of the school, then people and programs become even less. So it's just a visual. It's not accurate. I don't want Merrill to quote me on percentages right now as far as what it's supposed to look like, but it's just a visual aid to understand what's going on with our school system. And I've listened tonight, and I've had conversations with individuals on both sides. I want you to understand, when my daughter was born, who's now in ninth grade at Leon, my life changed. And I think for everyone that has children, we understand what it's like when you hold that child, and all your hopes and dreams of what you ever wanted for that kid is right there. And that's why every parent that came into my classroom, thereon after, that was on Level 10, I listened because I knew where they were coming from. It wasn't me, it wasn't about what was going on, it was their interest in their child's well-being. This public school system, though, is built on the well-being of all of our children. And I heard a couple of things like, aren't they public schools? And, you know, my tax, the money follows the kid and all that good stuff. So I thought about it this way. What would happen if taxes followed the car? But if you lived out in a rural area, and the amount of money that you would need to build a road out there, your access would be less than what it is because we have a community rate. Everybody pays taxes and we take care of everybody. That's part of being part of the community. And so the idea of the money following the student, yes, it does, but it's not a public traditional school that is accountable to this board. That's the issue. So I'm going to use less than my three minutes. I'm going to say thank you very much for your time. Please vote no on this one.
Thank you, Scott.
That's two times in a row.
That is two times in a row.
My name is Matt Gunderson. I reside at 5417 Clouds Peak Drive, Tampa, Florida, and I'm here on behalf of Plato Academy Schools. Madam Chair, Superintendent Hannah, and members of the board, thank you for your time tonight. I'd like to get a little personal, too, tonight and kind of speak from the heart myself. And thanks for the flyer that you just handed out. Where'd he go? He went outside. I think the most upsetting thing that we should all be in agreement on tonight is that the increase for students for next year is 47 cents a child. Tampa teachers in Hillsborough County, they were offered a pay raise of $92 a year. It's, the crisis here is that Florida's not funding its students adequately. The crisis should not be that students should have less choice. Choice is good for parents, and I think that's, you know, we're talking about, whose students are they? They're certainly not our students. They're the parent's students. These parents are the people we should be talking about, and the parents are the ones we should be listening to tonight because they're the ones who have to make the biggest decision in their children's lives, and that's what's the best school for their child. I have a child who has chronic health issues, and the ability to choose the right doctor for my child is critically important. I think parents should be given the same ability to choose the best school for their child, and I think there should be a competitive, healthy, free market for those parents to choose from. I think Plato Academy, its teachers would certainly be in agreement with every teacher in this room that they should earn more money for the hard work that they do. They put their hearts on the line every day for their kids. As you know, Plato Academy, Leon County, we've submitted an application. It's a high-performing replication application. At the last meeting, the comment was made that it was a cookie cutter application, and that's kind of the whole idea behind a high-performing replication application. It's based on a model that's incredibly successful, that's serving students well. And I want to reiterate a fact I pointed out at the last meeting. If you took our economically disadvantaged students, our minority students, our ESE students, and our ESOL students and clumped them together, collectively, they performed 101% better than their peers did in traditional schools. That's hard to argue with. Our program works. It's incredibly successful. The other comment that was made had to do with diversity. I don't know if it went unheard, but my school has 50% minority students in Plato Academy Tampa. Our other schools, every year, get more and more diverse and serve a greater number of economically disadvantaged kids. It's up near, between 30 and 40% at most of our schools.
Time.
Thank you for your time. Please vote yes.
Thank you.
My name is Lynda Edson. I live at 1841 Myrick Road here in Tallahassee. I do not live in Tampa. I have taught school in Leon County for 41 years. I'm now retired. I'm with the Florida Retired Educators, but I'm here as a grandmother, parent, taxpayer of Leon County. I have heard what's going on. We have choice in Leon County already. We, I'm on the DAC, we talk about it all the time. We have school choice. Children can go to any school in Leon County that they care to. We also have seen the product tonight of Leon County public schools. Could we have been more proud of that young gentleman that stood here or those wonderful ladies that now have their scholarship? So I'm sorry if somebody's child did not get a scholarship, but we have the opportunities here in Leon County. The for-profit, yes, these are for-profit. I spend a lot of time at the legislature. Why in the world you can have a legislator whose wife owns these charter schools and not consider it a conflict of interest? When I've asked our senators, I get the same response, and their response is, eh, they don't know why it's not considered a conflict of interest. Please, I urge you as a taxpayer, this is my county money going here. It's not Tampa people's money coming here. I want my money to go to public education, not to charter schools. Thank you.
Hello, I am Latrinda Jackson from 917 Tamarack Avenue, Tallahassee, Florida. I am the mother of two students in a charter school, and although I have a Master of Education in Counselor Education, I work as a substitute teacher in Leon County Public Schools. I am also an advocate for Title I schools as a parent liaison for Tallahassee School of Math and Science. I am not here because I am against public education. Instead, I am here because I am for the best education for my children. Charter schools allow families to choose settings for their students that may meet needs that are not easily met in their zone or possibly any traditional school in Leon County. Around this time, three years ago, I was frantically researching and comparing school options for my daughter because the idea of sending her off to a middle school of up to 1,000 or more students was terrifying. Although she is very intelligent, she's not gifted and talented, nor does she easily stand out amongst other students. So I knew that she could easily be lost in this shuffle. I feared that her speech and language delay, which sometimes affects her ELA performance, could cause her to be denied access to opportunities to excel or be challenged in the traditional public school setting. I wanted a small school setting and an opportunity for her to be challenged and enriched while receiving an education somewhat customized to the student group. I found what I was looking for at Tallahassee School of Math and Science, which is a K-8 school which holds less than 450 students. Here, she is able to build community with all the teachers and students inside the school and receive the motivation and inspiration that she needed to be successful and achieve a cumulative GPA of 3.6 so far. She also gets to compete with the Math and Science Olympiad teams with the requirement of top scores on the FSA not being a requirement. Once again, I am facing the dreadful task of transitioning her to another level, high school, and so far, I am not enthusiastic about her going to her zone school, which is Leon High. In my recent meeting with a guidance counselor and registrar at the school, they immediately decided that the recommendations of her registering her current school and the teachers was not good enough, that she should be placed in a lower-level class simply because of a past test score, without ever questioning her ability or seeking a recommendation or opinion of the people that have worked with her so much. I want my child to be more than a test score or a number that gets lost amongst thousands of other students. Parents should not have to pay for private education or homeschool for their students to get specialized education. Charter schools are not the enemy of traditional schools. They are simply an alternative for parents and students that want a type of education that is not offered in a traditional setting. Regulate charter schools, but don't just reject them. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Wilson Barnes, and I'm from, I live at 1949 Setting Sun Trail. And I'm here this evening as a representative of the NAACP. My president is here also, and Bill Tucker, who's also from our executive board. And beyond the doctrine of the NAACP that we are opposed to charter schools, I want to take this opportunity, Ms. Woods, to commend you for that great article that was in The Democrat on Sunday. You educated me with some depth. Mr. Superintendent, after reading that article, I knew that you had a winner by taking such a hard stance right off when you didn't know who was protecting your flank on being against these two charter schools. So let me commend you. I'm just going to mention one thing, as I think about the charter schools, and I know that both sides, everybody's interested in the education of their children, which they should be, and I commend them for that. But I'm interested in making sure that we prevent the resegregation of Leon County schools. I don't know whether y'all know that now. But segregation, Leon County School District is leading the way in resegregation and suspending black children, folks. We do not need charter schools where one of the unintentional consequences, I would guess, is going to be to add to this problem. We're going to be around the superintendent's neck demanding, and your board, that you all do something about those two problems, and you haven't done very much. I'm encouraged by what I heard tonight from the Title I people and also from Ms. Barnes from the Riley House Museum. Those are two encouraging initiatives. And let me also say that this business of the money, I see an indirect effect on those kind of programs. As these charter schools require more of the school board's money, then we're going to lose money for these excellent programs that Altemis Barnes was talking about. And I don't know about the Title I money, of course, but I'm sure there's some other money involved in all of those programs. So I'm going to urge you, school board and Mr. Superintendent, to do not vote in favor of these schools tonight. Vote against them.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Saylor at 836 Madeira Circle. I have some prepared remarks, but I do want to speak to the segregation issue. I grew up in the Jacksonville, Florida, area where they did busing for 20, 30 years. So I know that's not a popular idea, but if you truly want to end segregation within our school, talk to these folks about doing busing. So you have black students coming from the South Side to the North Side and vice versa. It'd be politically unpopular, and I don't think any of you would do it. But if you truly are committed to it, that is one thing to consider. I'm here to talk about charter schools. All right. First off, each of you have been elected by the people of this great state, this great county, and you are all charged with a very important duty of guarding the public purse, overseeing the thousands and tens of thousands of dollars that come from the legislature and add to the lower taxes to fund our public schools. Now, some people argue that you're guarding the taxpayer dollar by denying these applications. I would say that is incorrect because you are going to be fighting a losing battle. So let me ask you this. Is it a good idea to fight a losing battle, and I believe your attorney last school board session said, advised you of the relative merits of your case, saying the likelihood of you winning or succeeding on appeal is slim to none? So let me ask you this. Right now, it appears that there's a collision course between the Leon County School Board and these two charter schools, and the only winners in this are going to be the attorneys who are going to be collecting legal fees on both sides. I don't know how much an appeal is going to cost for Leon County schools, but probably tens of thousands of dollars, 20,000 of dollars, if you have to go out with further outside counsel. And if you do an appellate appeal to the First District Court of Appeal, let me tell you, I'm an attorney, and appellate fees are very, very high. So to avoid that, I would urge you to deny Mr. Hannah's recommendation and go with the law. The law is on your side. You can't go wrong with following that. Mr. Hannah mentioned that there's good cause, something about the state board said you can't build another school. Well, you do have the options to, for your underutilized schools, to shut those down to create capacity needs in other areas of the district where people are located. Heck, you could give one of those underutilized capacities or share those capacities, underutilized capacity schools with a charter school if you're willing to partner with them to meet the needs creatively of all students in our community. Lastly, is fighting a losing battle the best use of taxpayer dollars, my dollars, your dollars, our dollars? I would say it is not. I would urge you to follow the recommendation of your charter review committee and approve this application. And going forward, work with the charter schools to partner with us and those who are doing this, to go to those areas in Leon County where, that are underutilized, to the South Side, to Frenchtown. I would encourage you to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Delatrie Hollinger, 719 West Pervard Street. I'm privileged to serve as president of the Tallahassee branch of the NAACP, and I would like to first say that I'm a product of the Leon County school system, the public school system. I went to Wesson, Hartsfield, Fairview, Godby, and the Leon County Don Community Ed. And I'd like to recognize a few of my mentors in the audience. Anita Davis, Ms. Collier-Brown, Ms. Hearn, Ms. Maggie Lewis Butler, Ms. Joy Bowen, and others. And I'm only about six years removed from the public school system here in Leon County. I've heard a lot of people talk tonight about following the law, and- And certainly, state law provides for these schools, but I seem to recall watching Dr. King speak about what he called unjust laws, an unjust law. And just because it's the law doesn't mean that it's right. It doesn't means that it's right for our school system, our schoolchildren. It doesn't mean that it's right for our parents, so on and so forth. Last year, for the second year in a row, the NAACP, the nation's oldest civil rights group, called for a moratorium on charter schools. Charter schools were created with more flexibility, said a quote, "because they were expected to innovate and infuse new ideas and creativity into the traditional public school system." Members of the NAACP's educational task force said. However, this aspect of the promise never materialized. In 2016, the NAACP's National Convention delegates convened a task force for quality education. And after a series of nationwide listening sessions, they came back with a few recommendations that until these things were done, that moratorium would remain in place. That includes create and monitor transparent disciplinary guidelines that meet students' ongoing learning needs and prevent pushout. This recommendation states that charters be obligated to follow the same state disciplinary regulations as traditional public schools and use restorative justice in response to high suspension and expulsion rates. Require charter schools to hire certified teachers. Many states allow charters to hire the uncertified at far higher rates than traditional public schools. Require fiscal transparency and equity regarding the sources of revenues and how those resources are allocated. The task force recommended that charters be held to the same fiscal transparency standards as traditional public schools and that states address depletion of public school resources caused by the presence of charter schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bill Tucker?
Thank you. My name is Bill Tucker. I live at 2802 Primrose Lane, Tallahassee, Florida 32301. I'm also with the NAACP, and I'm its political action chair. And as President Hollinger indicated, NAACP has recommended a moratorium, that means stop it, don't do it, on the creation of new charter schools. And this is very critical. This outfit's been around since 1909. So when NAACP tells you or says something about the issue that impacts civil rights, you should listen. I think you should pay careful attention. This is not a small issue. One of the issues, and I want to ask you, create and enforce a rigorous charter authorization and renewal process in which districts are the only authorizers of charter schools. Now, I heard somebody say that you had the sole authority. Am I wrong about that? Because it turns out that only four states, Wyoming, Virginia, Iowa, and Kansas have that authority. What about you? If you say no, can it be overridden? Am I wrong? Or is it correct? Will your word be the final?
Sir, this is your opportunity to speak for three minutes. If you have that question, that question can be answered after the meeting is over.
Okay, fine. And I want to compliment Superintendent Hannah. He wrote two outstanding articles. And I think that's some of his best work. Thank you very much. Well, he's got more to do. You know that. Charter schools are dangerous and they suck out resources. And there are things about them I'm still hearing that they get to take resources away when they close, that kind of stuff. And they can cherry pick the system. I was struck by somebody who said that collective bargaining is an issue. I don't think they have it. And I come from a collective bargaining background. I was president of the faculty union at FAMU for many, many years. That's important. And I know I work with the Leon County school system, and I know that it's very, very critical. And we should do a lot of other things that are important. And then finally, eliminate for-profit charter schools. Take them out. They need to be removed. We don't need them. And also take out the pro-profit companies that run them. And you need to demand accountability so you know where every penny goes. And you don't have that. I don't think that's there. These companies fight very hard. I know Bessie DeWosser, who's superintendent of, who's actually the Secretary of Education, says that NAACP is not the arbiter of everything, and neither is she. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Zach Johnson?
Zach Johnson, 1517 Arnold Street in Tallahassee. I'll be brief tonight because I've spent a lot of time in school board-related meetings in the last month. And in that time, what I've figured out is I don't need to convince you anything about charter schools. I don't think there's anything I can, need to come up here and say. I don't need to convince you that mediocrity is not something that's acceptable to my principal or to any of you. I don't feel like I really need to convince you of that. I think what I've heard you weighing is whether the next appropriate action is for you to approve or deny based on the law. And Madam Chair, I would also like to thank you for your words last night and what you urged the board to do, or excuse me, the last meeting two weeks ago. And I think that is really the courageous thing and the only appropriate action to take here at this time still tonight. I've experienced on both sides in charter schools and in public schools. And I know what kind of money is behind the other side. I had an opportunity with some other LCTA members a few months ago. We met with Representative Alexander. Just as an anecdote, he told us the kind of donations that are going into, behind the seats in Tallahassee, $800,000, one donation or one set of donations to one state house race. So when you're looking at that other visual aid, the first visual aid you received with some things highlighted about how you won't win, it has nothing to do with whether or not you're right or wrong in making that stand. It has nothing to do with the validity of the claims that you'd be making and taking that stand, and everything to do with the amount of money that's behind the other side right now. That's a different fight. But you have an opportunity as board members to make that stand. And thank you, Madam Chair, for leading that kind of charge and following Superintendent Hannah on that. So thank you, and I would urge you to vote no on both of the charter applications before you tonight.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Adrienne Campbell.
Adrienne Campbell, 3646 Ockley Drive, Tallahassee, Florida 32302. I wasn't going to speak because I didn't know if I could hold it together, and this is very apparent that I cannot.
You can wave in opposition if you would like to. I'm just throwing that out there to you.
I think this is my last chance to share. And so. I'm sorry. Jamie and I graduated from Florida State University to get our certification in social science education. We started our careers together at Amos Peak Army High School where we taught for years. When Jen and I came across classical education, we were so excited. We were excited about the curriculum and the contents, and we were just excited about the instructional practices that we saw. And we were even more excited when we found out that a classical education can be provided in a public school setting.
One thing I want to chime in with is we are not opposed to the public school system. Ma'am, I'm sorry. Let's let her have her three minutes.
We aren't opposed to public schools. And furthermore, we were excited that a charter school could be a part of the public school system to work alongside you and to partner with you and not to fight with you and make it political and to do an us-first them. But to do, to bring something that we researched and that we loved into Leon County for our kids and for everyone's kids and to be reflected in the community. We've reached out to all of you. We've reached out to Mr. Barnes. We've reached out to other community leaders to show that we are serious about partnering and being a part of the public school system. I have worked with principals here in this community. I've worked with teachers here in this community, and I've been a public servant my entire, my entire educational career. I never wanted this. We never wanted this to be an us-first of you. We wanted to join you and be a part of Leon County schools. And that's why we're here tonight, as a homegrown nonprofit school that wants to do great things for our kids and for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. No more speakers, Madam Chair. Thank you. At this time, I just want to, I want to thank everybody for being here, for your passion, for your love of education, for your love of this community, and for your tolerance of each other. I know that there are hurt feelings here tonight on both sides. And I promise you, no matter what happens here tonight, this community will do the very best we can to educate every child, every child. And I urge you to stand with us on that. And thank you for being here. All right. At this time, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We've reviewed this, had a gender review this week, asked questions. At this time, do I have a motion to approve consent?
Second.
Moved by Rasmussen, second by Bowen. All in favor? Opposed. Passes unanimously. All right. 1901 was pulled, so 1902 approval of the insurance of Blighar compliance certificate for the Series 2016 COPs.
This is a requirement by the bond documents that we get a certification from you that we've met our requirement to have the proper insurance, which we have done. So that's, we did this last year. Last year's the first year we had to do it. It's the same thing.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Rasmussen, second by Bowen. All in favor? Opposed. Passes unanimously. 19.03, Superintendent recommends permission to advertise the proposed 2018-19 capital outlay budget for the school district of Leon County and bring the final proposed budget to the board for consideration and vote on May 8, 2018.
Yes, Madam Chair. Attached, you'll find the proposed capital outlay budget that was recently voted on and approved by the Capital Outlay Committee. Tonight, we're asking permission to advertise that for a public hearing on May the 8th.
Second. Moved by Wood, second by Bowen. All in favor? Opposed. Passes unanimously. 19.04, Plato Academy charter application. I believe Superintendent Hannah wants to say a few things before we...
I do, Madam Chair. I would ask at this time also Bev Owens to come up, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to take very long. I mean, I spoke at length, some length last, our last meeting, you know how I feel on this, on this issue and this position. But I did want to share a couple of things with you. First, there's a, there's been some confusion about charter schools and what types of statutes they have to follow and not follow. And then I think there's been some things that are misrepresented about charters having to follow all of the same statutes as we do. And if you go... Where it says here, charter schools are generally exempt from the Florida K-12 Education Code, except those statutes specifically applying to charter schools, which is basically this entire book. Another issue came up about certifications, while their teachers do have to hold a valid teaching certification. Charter school administrators don't have to have any certifications at all. They have, they don't have to have any knowledge of school finance, school law, laws surrounding adults with, or children with disabilities, IDEA, which is very, which is very concerning to me. That, I'm not sure why that provision's in there, that all of our principals and assistant principals have to be firmly vetted by the state of Florida, have to pass the Florida Educational Leadership Test. And I'm not sure exactly why that's in statute, but none of their administrators have to be, have to be certified. When it comes to money, we had a discussion that the dollars follow the child, and I want to give an example of that. In a way, that's, it's correct in a way, and then in a way, it's really kind of misleading. So currently, as proposed, we would have in 19, or 2019, 2020, a total of 2,336 students with the additional of these two new applications. You can see the dollars that would then travel, and that's just FEFP dollars. That doesn't include any of the federal programs, the Title I, Title I dollars or capital outlay dollars, any of that. So it's a very conservative number. So what I did was I kind of backed out the math and said, okay, well, if you have 2,336 students, and if those students return to the Leon County school system, we would need to have teachers that would teach them. So I took an average class size of 20, divided it into the 26, 36, came up with 117 teacher units that we would need. Currently, our average teachers with benefits, and some of them, including my wife, may find this hard to believe, is actually $58,000. So we take that $58,000 times 117 teachers, and it gives us around $6.8 million. Also added some instructional materials in there because we would have to purchase books for those students. So in total, we're just around $7 million. So if you take that $7 million and the $13 million we sent, that's a loss of just over $6 million. And then that's for principals, assistant principals, custodians, utility bills, all of the fixed assets that Scott Mazer and others taught. That's, that's the real number that would be lost to Leon County schools. In the final, in the projection, the projected numbers in 2023, 2024, if we call that a net, that 6,000 is, that 6 million is a net, that net increases in 2324 to almost $11 million a year. That's just math. Those are just numbers. Again, we have limited resources, Mr. Mallard and others. We talked about all these wonderful programs we had. We had Ms. Barnes here talking about the Riley House. It's just, it's just a reality. If we continue to lose those dollars, those programs are going to disappear as well. So Bev, if you would, at this time, I want to kind of recap an experience we had with one of our charters that closed down and talk just a minute, and then I'll, I'll kind of wrap things up and then leave it in your hands.
What I'm going to do is talk to you a little bit about some information about Imagine Charter, which closed last year. It was a charter school that was open for eight years. Over those eight years, the school earned almost $22 million in FEFP. The total public dollars were over 25 million, almost 26. In addition to that, they earned almost a million dollars in capital outlays, so you could add that to the total. In terms of their facility, they paid almost $7.7 million in lease payments. When they closed, the public didn't see any, any of those, any of those funds in terms of the lease payments. I also have a second sheet, Chris. This was a management company-run school. And over the, over those nine years, the school actually paid the management company over $12 million. Part of that money was, it was public money given to a for-profit company. And part of that money that the school was required to pay was called loss mitigation monies. They took money from the school every year, put it in a savings account. They said that, you know, they would help the school. They would give them, front them operating money. But they took their money ahead of time in case they ever had a chance or a need to be paid back money. So they used their own money, the public money, to take care of those needs. They didn't take any money out of their coffers. They didn't take any money out of their coffers. $12 million that went to the management company, $7.7 million that was paid in a lease. When the two, when the school was closed, two buildings were emptied, and none of those funds came back to the public.
Thank you, Bev.
I think you also wanted me to mention Governor's Charter. In terms of their building, they are renting, I mean leasing a building right now. It's like a partnership between Renaissance Charter School, which is their board, and Red Apple Development. And they pay about $1.1, $1.2 million a year for their building. But in 2023, that payment blooms to almost $5.8 million. And that will continue until 2042, a lease payment of over, of almost $5.8 million. In addition to that, their contract related to the building requires them to pay additional rent in addition to that lease, and that can go up to $75,000 a year. And so that's the information that the superintendent wanted me to share with you. I don't know if any of you have any questions.
Yes.
I had a question about how school boards are selected for charter schools, and particularly, I guess, in these two cases, and what is there about term limits? Who gets to vote for them, that sort of thing?
Well, generally, charter schools' bylaws define how their members are selected and what the term limits are. It varies from charter school to charter school.
But the two applications...
Tell us, classical, the, they have a founding board, they list three members. And Plato has a board that is a, that runs numerous schools across the state.
I find it interesting that there's a proposal in the Constitution to do away with the school board authority and school board terms, but in charter schools, that doesn't seem to apply. They get to make up their own rules.
Right.
All right, ladies, I believe we're looking at...
Hold on, if I may, Madam Chair, this one. A little bit more about that property. So that property was in financial distress at Evening Rose, Imagine, and was taken over, the note was taken over by another developer, another owner, and one building has recently been sold, a piece of that for $2.5 million. We'll never see any of that. Now, I'm not saying that this person that bought the note's going to make money, lose money, or indifferent, but the reality is, the taxpayers of this community will see, have seen that $25 million and not realize any of it. Whereas in our schools, of course, that they are maintained by our, by the community and owned by the taxpayers and the residents of Leon County. You mentioned one thing at the last meeting, Ms. Wood, about your concerns with diversity. I keep hearing this word replication, like we're going to have replication. So this is the classical, I guess, the Mason Classical School?
Yeah, that's not the replication model, though.
Okay, so let me give you, let me just, let me stick with classical. This is an example of the classical school, the Mason Classical School, and you can see by the bar graphs, what, in Collier County, what, and I believe, is Ms. Donalds from Collier County? I believe she is, ironically enough. So Erica Donalds, who is one of the big driving forces behind the Classical Academy, and who is the one that sponsored or helped push the CRC decision to try to deceive voters in November, that put you all in term limits on one end and put civic education on the other end, oh, by the way, snuck in that you will no longer have oversight of what schools come into Leon County, that that will be done at the state level instead of the local level. So this is an example of the diversity or lack thereof of the Mason Classical School in Collier County. And I think those bar graphs speak for themselves. That's very disturbing when we talk about the resegregation of schools in Leon County, that you can't help but take notice of that. So if and when the day comes that the classical school opens, or in Leon County, I would certainly hope that those numbers would not look like the ones where Ms. Donald, where she has that classical school in Collier. The other one, the other Plato Academy that is the replication... So this is Palm Harbor Plato Academy, and you can see here again, the average in, the average in the county is much higher as far as their minority rate and the economically disadvantaged rate than the actual representation of this particular school, which again is also very concerning. And what's concerning to me is concerning to this board, we've had numerous talks about the resegregation of our schools, and I would just hope and pray that, you know, if these two charter schools are approved at the state level or later down the road and do come to Leon County, that this is not, this is not the replication that we see here.
I think what we're seeing here, Superintendent, if you're, if I can translate, what we're looking at is that Plato, as well as the classical schools around the state, model exactly the opposite of their communities. Is that what we're, there's an inverse relationship almost. We're seeing, they don't look like their communities when we were, I think that was one of the...
Which is one of the concerns that Ms. Wood brought, and all of you. We've had numerous conversations, even aside, before this became an issue, about our schools and choice, and what the unintended consequences were of choice, and me holding firm on lines and ceding capacity, and, 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 although it hasn't been easy. You know, I mean, but now I'm fearful that if, you know, whether you approve them, don't approve them, the state of Florida, the board approves them or whatever, I would be very disappointed if I saw this, and I think you all would too, that we would want them to do a better job of emulating what our schools look like and what our, what Leon County looks like as a whole, right? As opposed to the drastic differences in these numbers. So I would, I would close, and we talked about the law and this law and that law, and I would like to mention something about fighting a battle or me fighting about or not. Those of you who know me, certainly know by now that I would like to fight a battle I believed in and lose than not to have the courage to fight a battle at all. That's just who I am. Is this not about politics? It's not about taking the easy way out. It's about doing what I believe is truly right, and it's with all due respect to these applicants and to these schools. Good cause, I'll remind you, is a legal term denoting adequate or substantial grounds or reason to take certain action or to fail to take an action as prescribed by law. And I keep going back to 1,001.51, where it says, "The district school superintendent is mandated, under Florida statute, to approve the establishment of schools as needed to provide adequate educational opportunities for all public school students." That a district school board has a duty under this same Florida statute by law to provide adequate educational facilities for all children without payment of tuition. I have no hesitation whatsoever in saying that we are absolutely meeting this statute and currently providing not simply adequate, but high-quality educational facilities for all of the public school children in Leon County. As you are well aware, the Florida Department of Education completely agrees with this analysis and has rejected our request to build a new school on three separate occasions. Tonight, you are being asked to consider approving not one, but two applications for new schools in Leon County. I realize that this is not easy, but I truly believe that approval of these applications is not the responsible thing to do. I also believe you have more than adequate and substantial grounds giving you good cause to deny these applications and approve option one. You know, sometimes in life, you have to take a stand. I honestly believe that now is that time. Today is the day Leon County schools can send a message to lawmakers across the state that enough is enough. We will no longer be willing participants in a program which I believe attempts to systematically dismantle one of the great cornerstones of our democracy, our public school system. I guess when it comes down to it, it's one simple question. Are you willing to put your name on this check for over $13 million at the expense of what's best for all of our children? I am not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, ladies, we are on 19.04, Plato Academy Charter Application, Discussion, Motion. We are already done with consent. We are on 19.04, approval of Plato Academy Charter Application.
19 what?
Sure. We, if anybody, yep.
19 what?
Yes, Ms. Bowen.
Madam Chair, I move the superintendent's recommendation for the approval of option one, denial of the Plato Academy Charter School applications submitted to the school district on February 1, 2018.
I'll second that.
Moved by Bowen, option one to deny, second by Wood. Any discussion?
Which one is that, 19 what?
We're on 19.04.
Okay, I'll speak to that. And I had a lot of things to say, and I think a lot of things have been said, and I do appreciate how emotional we all are about this issue in both ways, and we're speaking on the Plato Academy right now, so I'll just have my remarks about that. I appreciate the extra two weeks that we had to really think about this because this was, this was a hard decision. We're sort of bucking precedent here by what the superintendent has recommended, but I have come to believe that his argument is true and is right. It may not hold up when it comes down to the appeal, but I have come to agree with you and Madam Chair last week, saying that sometimes you have to make a stand. Something I, I've learned a lot doing some research, and one thing I learned just today, I thought, well, what, what is it that makes a high-performing school get to have all these special rules? Because in that statute, there are very few things you can turn down about a high-performing charter. They basically have to almost, you know, break the law or be fiscally irresponsible. So I thought there would be a long list of requirements to be a high-performing charter. I assumed it would have something to do with, they had taken the least of these, the students who needed them most and have made, showed great, shown great improvements, and that would be why they would be a high-performing charter. But that's not what it turns out. I use that same DOE website that you showed a minute, Superintendent, and here's, here's all it says, really. It's very short. According to Statute 100233.1, "A high-performing charter school is a school that has met each of the following criteria: received at least two school grades of A and no grade below B for the last three years; received an unqualified opinion on each annual audit in the most recent years; and did not receive a financial audit that revealed one or more of the financial emergency conditions set forth." That's it. We have many schools in this town that meet those requirements, many, that have never had anything but an A, never below a B for two years. And I'm just surprised that that's all it takes to be considered a high-performing. I also learned today, which also surprised me, that I knew that of the FTE, Leon County Schools keeps 5% for overhead, because we do a lot of the books and so forth for the charter schools, because we're technically over them, even though we don't have much to say about what they do. If you're a high-performing charter, you only pay 2%. So with this very, to me, empty requirement, that's a lot of money saved. And so that's just another reason that I think we have to stand up here and say, as you said, kind of enough is enough. I also would note one more time that there is only one person here from the Plato Academy to advocate for this school. It's not like the classical school. We have, you know, a lot of parents who have worked hard, and they want this, and they feel it, and it's, but to have a, you know, a principal come and say, "My school had 50% minority, and we did well." Well, I looked up today, you know, some of the schools, and I still don't understand quite how this happened, but I'm just going to use two. They have about nine schools. Plato, Palm Harbor, they got an A, but as Superintendent showed, you know, they have 3% black students. Last year, 18% economically disadvantaged students and 82% white students. The one of their schools that did receive a C had a more of a representation of black students and economically disadvantaged. And I would say you see that at our schools, too. So, you know, it's not like there's some magic bullet that they're bringing in to have this very different school that we don't offer. I don't think that's true. I think it has to do with who goes to the schools, and the parents who are involved, and the parents who, you know, will carpool their child to school, and they will make those sacrifices, and they're able to make those sacrifices because they're not working three jobs, and they live close to the school, because there is no bus transportation provided by either of these applicants. And I think that's a real discriminatory thing. If you truly want to serve a community, then you have to provide transportation to allow everyone to have equal access to that school. So I'm very confident in supporting the superintendent's recommendation tonight. Thank you.
All right, any further comment? All right, I have a motion and a second. Oh, sorry, 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 comment. Just to remind anyone who may not have been here, two weeks ago, I actually offered a motion to, to support the approval of this replication of a highly performing charter under the provisions of the law and based on legal advice and the advice of our counsel. And failing to get a second, it was pretty clear two weeks ago, and I, and even more so tonight, probably if you noticed, if you can count who made the motions and who made the seconds, that it is the intent of this board and this superintendent to not add to the number of charter schools under the current environment in our county. So I want to speak to that for a minute. Two weeks ago, I asked very specifically if both of these charter applicants would be willing to just willfully, on their own accord, work with us to try to address the resegregation issue. If you would work with us, I mean, I don't think the public really, we don't have the discretion to say to these two very similar applicants, "Can you combine together and teach both Greek and Latin, and by the way, be on the south side of town?" You know, that's not an option that's available to us. And so it's the only really option that we have, is to try to prevail upon them to be willing partners with us. So in the likely event that you end up prevailing on an appeal, I hope you will continue to work with us. I know that we stand ready to work with you. It's just apparent, you know, a matter of conviction. And so to that end, I want to, I want to just, I know this goes without saying to almost everyone in the room, but when I made the motion two weeks ago, it was based on the very limited provisions of the prevailing statute specific to charters. It was not a question of a higher calling or a higher duty to the Constitution of the state of Florida, which, as most people in this room know, but I'll remind anyone who might be watching, "The education of children is a fundamental value of the people of the state of Florida. It is therefore a paramount duty of the state to make adequate provision for the education of all children residing within its borders." And I do share a concern of my colleagues that this will adversely affect some of our other schools and could exacerbate the current problem that we have unless you truly will work with us to try to make your schools as diverse as this community is. And so I hope that you will join us in that. Thank you. Any further comment?
You can go ahead. I'm delighted, as I was last time, to see all the parents that are interested in their children. I'm delighted that you are interested in your children receiving a quality education. Unfortunately, our Leon County School District is facing resegregation, and it has been documented and studied for Leon County School District. Our schools will struggle because of resources taken from our schools. Our schools will struggle because of resources taken from our schools. Our schools, this will create unlimited resources in our schools. All this is unfortunately. However, because of this, I'm very familiar with charter schools, I visit charter schools, but this is not the time for a new charter school in our district. We have schools that are doing the same curriculum that you're to, you're going to create for the charter school. So we need to meet the needs as they stand today in the public schools. So because of that, I would not be recommending a charter school. I will be voting along with the superintendent. Thank you.
Ms. Bowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank each of you for being here tonight to express to your board your thoughts, your feelings, and your opinion about the charter schools and about the traditional public schools. This afternoon, as I was preparing for this meeting, I kept trying to think of something, to write something so that I would have a script. I was not able to write a script tonight, and it dawned on me, when you really know within your knower joy that you're doing the thing that you know is right, you don't have to have a script. And so the superintendent shared with us information yesterday and today, which helped me to know that my vote in support of his recommendation is the right thing to do for a couple of reasons. I think that our schools are finding ourselves in a diminished way when it comes to dollars for the traditional public schools. That does not make me feel good. I'm about to date myself right now when I say that on this board, I am probably the only one who had to go, since there have been some other personal inferences made tonight, attend a segregated school system when it was the law. And it looks to me like we are about to turn time in the clock back to where segregation is the thing to do here in Leon County. That doesn't feel good. It doesn't taste good. It doesn't smell good. And it doesn't make me feel good that as an advocate for the students in District Five, that I am in twenty eighteen still fighting some of these battles. These are my opinions. And I want all of our children to get quality education. I want all of our children to get the highest possible quality education that they can get. And so if we were to approve these schools, monies would be taken again from the traditional public schools. And I don't think that the parents of the Riley children, the parents of Rutiger and Ra and Godby and other parents deserve anything other than the best. So I hope that as friends and neighbors in this community that we live, we can look at a way that we can continue to provide what is best for all of us. And I dare not even start to talk about leveling the playing field so that little girls and boys cannot have their dreams deferred because of a lack of resources that they ought to get from their mamas and daddies' tax dollars. A dream deferred doesn't feel good. It festers, and it makes folk not want to be a part of society and to become all they can become. And so tonight, with the diversity that we bring to this board, representing the districts as we do, I'm going to have to vote with the superintendent that we not accept this And oh, I'm wearing red because red and white are my sorority colors. People already accosted me at the door, and I think I look good in red, so what can I say?
Thank you. I said enough last week. I'm not sure I'm going to go into it, but you are not mediocre. You are not mediocre, and neither is our education system.
Totally.
None of it.
That's right.
We have a first, we have a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously the denial of Plato Charter. Nineteen point oh five, Tallahassee Classical Charter School application.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move the superintendent's recommendation.
Second. Which recommendation, Ms. Lewis Butler?
Nineteen point zero five.
Okay. There's option one to deny or option two to approve?
Option two to approve, not the one to deny.
So if you're making a motion, I need to know if your motion option is for one to deny the Tallahassee Classical or option two to approve.
Option one.
Option one to deny. Yes? Correct. Second. Yes, option to deny. Okay, all right. I have a motion, thank you.
And then she did a second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Lewis Butler for option one to deny Tallahassee Classical Charter School application, and a second by Ms. Wood. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
I would like to say something.
Okay.
I really appreciate the fact that two Godby High School teachers worked so hard on this proposal. I have concerns about the larger, the affiliated, Hillshire affiliated classical in the sense that the, the charts that we saw are the charts that we saw. But I did meet this week with Jamie Carbonell, and I feel certain that if they appeal and are granted their charter, that we will be able to work together really well. And I really believe your sincerity, that you want to make this a school for everyone, and I know you do. And I, I think, you know, I don't think any dispersion should be cast on any of you at all because you've worked hard for this and you believe in it, and we'll work together with you, you know, if you get approved, because we want what's best for all our children and we know that that's what you want as well. And so I just want us to all have that flavor and leave with that taste in our mouth because I, I think really the whole board and the superintendent feel that way. This is not about you or your efforts. It's, it's more of a philosophical stance that we are taking to say that, you know, we only got forty-seven cents per student this year for our students. And we've been in discussion, the board has, is how can we make our schools more appealing and more attractive and so that people want to go and they don't, you know, want to flee the school system to go other places? And to do that, we have to have the resources. But it also takes the leadership, and I, I feel that with our, you know, the leaders on the board and the superintendent, that we are going to make some offerings. And if for some reason you don't win on appeal, I would welcome you to come and help us bring some of the ideas that you have right into our public schools because, you know, we need a lot of ideas. We want our schools to be top-notch, and with the help of the community, I think we can be. So thank you again for your efforts. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ditto. All right, I do, I do just want to take a second. I ran into Jamie, not by intention, we ran into each other this week and sat and talked like we were friends, like we were old friends, and she's someone who I would, after ten minutes, I thought we would be friends in any other setting, and I hope, I hope that we will be. I think Ms. Wood said very clearly, we, we were attracted to the fact this was a homegrown group, and you guys put so much effort into this, and we don't want you to think that, that we're ignoring that fact. But I'll take it a little bit different spin. I thought to myself, and Jamie and I talked about what school she's zoned for and how old our children are and where mine had been and our, our past experience with education. If we had your passion, you and Jana both, and your, your heart and your excitement in our, in one of our public, if you were to take that, I wish we could harness that and put it into a PTO at one of our public schools. We have a great example in the room of a parent who, who did just that. She comes to us with great resources, and she threw herself into her school in her zone, and she's made a true difference and a true difference for, for our school district. And I, I'm sure it will never happen, but I would love to see you guys as parents of, of our public schools here in Tallahassee. You would be such an asset to us. And, and we're, we're impressed at this group of parents. Like I said, I just can't, we would be blessed to have you as part of our system in our traditional public schools. I wish you would reconsider that, so just put that out there.
Ditto, ditto, ditto.
Yes. Basically ditto, but, but I think, too, we're going to have to figure out how we can reinvent ourselves to remain competitive if the trajectory of the charter vision continues. And so this may be a perfect opportunity for us to fe, thank you, ma'am, sorry. We're going to have to figure out a way to reinvent ourselves to remain competitive in some ways. We're going to have to be creative, and I don't know if this presents an opportunity for a unique partnership that we haven't even thought of yet. And so I would just like to hold that out as a possibility.
Mm-hmm. We're open.
Right. We're innovative, always new ideas and think outside the box.
All right, so I have a first and a second on option one to deny, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. All right. Are we all exhausted? It's nine o'clock.
No.
Nineteen point oh six, Tallahassee Leon County Planning Commission Representative for twenty eighteen through twenty twenty.
Move the recommendation.
Moved by Ms. Lewis Butler, second.
Oh, second, yes.
Second by Wood, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. Upcoming meetings, financial statements, reports from board liaisons.
Yeah, I, let me see. Let me see, I have something to say.
Oh, what you got?
Okay, I want to talk about Ms. Karina Richardson.
Oh, my goodness.
She got the whole paper. Ms. Debiton, twenty eighteen, and we know about the United States Representative Lawson Military Academy nominee, Karina Richardson appointed United States Navy Academy. The whole paper.
Congratulations, Karina.
We want to salute you tonight.
Yes, we do.
Your success.
Very nice.
For your school year and as for being a student school board member. You've been outstanding.
Very proud of you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Karina. All right, twenty-two point oh one.
I want to recognize someone, too. Renita Davis.
Is the meeting over?
Commission, we need to recognize you tonight. You have been great in our community, in every face of the community, education, health, and all the facets in the, in the Tallahassee community, and we appreciate you and thank you for being here tonight. And also, I salute you tonight for all your accomplishments that you've done for the Tallahassee community. Thank you.
And.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have been serving for many years, and it's the first time I've ever been invited to your board meeting.
Well, no invitation is.
Totally.
Somebody else says you're doing the right thing.
Yes.
You can't blame somebody else for what we don't do, so learn how to say thank you a few times.
Thank you for being here.
And you have a standing invitation.
Thank you for being here. Superintendent's comments?
Briefly, Madam Chair, first, I just want to say thank you and tell you what an honor it is to work with, with you all. I know this wasn't an easy decision for any of us, and sometimes, as even a parent, you have to make tough decisions, and your child's hurt, but it's, you honestly believe it's the right thing to do, and I honestly believe this is to protect the good of the whole. But I'm proud to work with you each and every day, and that's all I have to say about that. But finally, the peanut butter and jelly drive?
Oh, that was great.
PB and J. So we set a goal of ten thousand pounds, and we exceeded it by six, so we were almost at seventeen thousand pounds of peanut butter and jelly. Yeah. Every school participated at, at some level. It's enough peanut butter and jelly to make almost a hundred and thirty thousand sandwiches for kids that are, that are be hungry, so they won't have to be hungry this summer. So I'm very proud of all of our schools, and one I'd particularly like to give a shout out was Bond Elementary School.
Oh, right.
Bond Elementary School donated over five hundred pounds of peanut butter and jelly.
Oh.
There's someone, that's something everybody can get behind, peanut butter and jelly, right? Yes.
No child would be.
All right, any further concerns?
Madam Chair, I've kind of been holding my tongue. I just wanted to listen.
Yes, ma'am.
So I believe choice is very important, of course, but I also have been able to witness through middle school and high school how amazingly important public schools are. I did not go to a public school for elementary, and I think I received an amazing education, but the education and opportunities that students who do come from lower economic statuses receive at public schools, especially Title One, has been amazing to witness. I've been, you know, blessed to come from a family that's been able to provide for me, but my peers who don't have that, you know, they don't have or wouldn't have those same opportunities, I think, if they, you know, didn't attend a public school. So I think that while charter schools can fill a gap in, in areas, you know, whose public schools are lacking and falling behind, I think here in Leon County, our public schools are amazing, and they are far from perfect. I know I've complained, complained about my own school, and I think it, you know, could be improved. I think a lot of that goes back to being underfunded and goes back to, you know, legislation that is not supporting, you know, the schools where a majority of students attend. And it's sad to see because, you know, we do have amazing programs and all of that. So I think you all, you all voted well today, and I think that even if the charter school is approved, I think it'll hopefully do well and you will work with public schools. But I think for right now, students need those resources right now that they, you know, are being slowly taken away, and it's, it's unfortunate. And I think that hopefully, you know, as people reiterated today, we have to talk to our legislators and, you know, continue that fight. But as for right now, I think that, you know, trying to keep up with the public schools here in Leon County that are doing amazing work is, is what needs to be done. So, thank you.
And on that note, move, Madam Chair.
Good job.